I'm going to call our meeting to order. So it's five o'clock. Study session begins at five. So Laurlee, will you call the board, please?
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessin.
Here.
Nancy Rumpel.
Thank you Laurlee. And Nancy isn't here, so Stu, would you lead us in the pledge?
Of course, of course, the pledge. Oh, over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stu? All right, the first item on our agenda is of course the adoption of the agenda for today, March 6th, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda. Is printed?
Second.
Okay, that was Dawn and Stu have seconded, first and seconded, whatever the word would be, cast.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. All right. Laurlee, please call the board.
Stu Boyd.
Hi.
Denise Chapman.
Hi.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz.
Hi.
Alexandra Lessin.
Hi.
Nancy Rumpel.
Thank you Laurlee. The motion passes. And we will turn to Thompson Valley High School for their presentation.
I will, I'm Roy Trippi, Assistant Principal here at Thompson Valley. And on behalf of Thompson Valley High School, welcome, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, fellow board members, cabinet, thank you for being here tonight. Our principal, Jamie Kruichink, is unavailable tonight. She's actually traveling to Utah to learn a little bit more about dual language immersion, which will be coming to Thompson Valley High School next year. So I was honored with the opportunity to introduce Mr. Rob Porzicki, who's going to talk a little bit about our ninth grade success grant that we've hosted the last few years. And Rob has been one of our coordinators for that. And he's got a couple of our Thompson Valley High School students to talk a little bit about their experience having come through that ninth grade program. So Mr. Porzicki, it's all yours. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So our ninth grade grant was a four-year grant through CDE that is expiring this year. So ninth grade matters. Some of these slides are theirs. What we found for keeping kids on track was English and math. A kid who's being unsuccessful in both of those is a kid we need to track very closely. So that became sort of our parameter. The next slide talks about ninth graders being three and a half times more likely if they are on track. Our eighth period day allows us, if they're passing six, first ninth grade year, if they get six credits, they're pretty much on track. So again, the English and math combined was the one that kind of scared us, is what we found out. We are Grant School F. So this was again, one of their slides when they came. We hosted a week ago, schools who are just getting the grant, and they wanted to hear about how we used the grant. So you can see, we demographically, size-wise, are a pretty typical high school. Like we're not, you know, crazy rich or crazy poor, or huge or small. And you can see, we were below the red line of the average for graduation, and now we are well above it. So the state wanted to see what we were doing. Next. Thank you. You guys know those numbers. Next. Some of that's grant, some of that's not. And so then, just quickly, what we went over, what we've done, so in its chronological order. So during eighth grade, we have the transition night, we have registration night. We put together a course book for our ninth graders. The course book, I believe, is 144 pages. And if you're an eighth grade parent who's never done this before, your head's going to explode. Like, and there's crazy things in there about AP capstone and things you just don't need to look at in eighth grade. So I think we have it down to 14 pages. And it's literally copy and paste, but it's what they need. And the registration sheet is pretty self-explanatory. We are, as FTE comes out here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be talking about what teachers we need to put with our ninth graders. In some schools, of course, that's traditionally given to the rookie. That's not always the best way to do that. And so we have people like Nate Hoffman, who have been here forever, and TJP also work with our ninth graders. We do, our dean will go meet with Walt Clark and Bill Reed to talk about kids that we might want to have on our radar and figure out ways we can help be successful. Our counselor does the exact same thing. So we also get a transition report, but we go and have face-to-face meetings to get more information. So coming in, we know quite a bit about our incoming class. Summer Bridge, three-week-long in the mornings, late July, early August, so kind of the last three weeks of summer. We have about 30 of our students who come in. It was targeted the first couple of years, and now it's more open to anyone. But the kids who come connect with adults, they connect with some peers. It's fascinating that kids are still, you forget how nervous they are to come to the big building with the big kids. After 30 years, I forget that, but it's still a thing. And so they have, they know the building. Again, they know two, three, four adults. They have 29 peers that they've met and have some connection with. And then the first week, we of course have, we do back-to-school night, the first day of the schedule, right, is just ninth graders. And with Link Crew, we brought Link Crew back last year and part of that. So the grant, and you guys know funding, so it's not, everything here is from the grant. I have no idea if Jamie paid for Link Crew out of the grant, but she paid for some things out of the grant, which allowed us to have Link Crew, whether trickle-down or if it was actually part of the grant. So we've got Link Crew back. If you're familiar with that, upperclassmen are picked by teachers and asked, and they help, they'll have a group of 10 to 12 freshmen all year that they will meet with periodically. That first day, they do a lot. But then that's another group that you're just connected to. So from day one, they know their schedule, they know their classes. Again, they have an upperclassman that's looking out for them. Most of our schools do B and C, or all of them do, but A is something we brought back this year. And Sarah also is on the freshman connect the summer bridge, so doing a lot there. So everyday resources, all of our freshmen either take Avid or Freshman Seminar, or Eagle One-on-One, or like, there's lots of names for it. We've gone back and forth on that being a full semester, a full year, or just one semester. This year was one semester. Ms. Shoup runs that. Academics, how to be a good student, how to send an email to a teacher, interpersonal skills, social skills, futures planning, so they're getting in all the counseling stuff there about what classes to take and all of those sorts of things. What do you want to be when you grow up?
And every student does that.
Every student, every, we have a very select, I'm going to say, 15 kids a year do not. And it's your kids who are in pre-AP, geometry, and orchestra, and all of the things, and just don't have room and probably don't need our help with study skills. But yes, other than that, yes, they all take one or the other. So basically, any non-avid kid will take Freshman Seminar. During ELO, we offer tutoring, which of course is math-heavy, because somebody put letters into math, and that confused most of us. Katie was our re-engagement specialist during COVID and has been just unbelievably amazing. And she meets with kids all the time. She goes well beyond the re-engagement piece of like, who's not here and who do we need to track down? She's doing that, but even for our kids in the building, she does tons of one-on-one tutoring. She was a para. She's worth her weight in gold. One of the things I told the people who were here with the grant, I make, this is expensive. Katie is less expensive and is a bigger bang for your buck. If you get rid of the ninth grade coordinator, get rid of the ninth grade coordinator. Do not get rid of Katie. Again, Link Crew, again, our ELOs, if you're unfamiliar, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 47 minutes. We do clubs, we do tutoring, we do lots of different things. I have a special invite group. I spend my time with ninth graders who aren't making all the right decisions. So you can be asked to come for that. So we use that time very effectively. I've talked about Katie, I've talked about Link Crew. Next. And then dedicated resources, again, we have a permanent ninth grade counselor. So Hayden is new this year, but he's going to stay with the ninth graders. So our 12th grade counselor will go to 10. Everyone else will just move up, but he's going to stay with ninth. And then of course, there's my role, which is mostly going to go away, if not completely. I think that'll depend on FTE. But I was grant funded, so that will be a building decision. And then we have a ninth grade administrator. I do a lot of data work. I try to be in with the dean whenever we have a ninth grader in there, if I can, just for support, and they sort of know me, so it makes it, I don't know, maybe more scary or less scary, depending on the kid. And then Tia and I and Hayden, we PLC bi-weekly, which every two weeks, since bi-weekly means more than one thing for some reason. And we go over all kinds of data. Tia is pulling a report, and I don't know that we even need to pull those up, but it's an early warning system. So I think you get points, I know you get points for attendance, grades, and discipline. And the higher the score, the higher risk you become. There's not a lot of surprises on that list. We all can tell you who's on the list. Where that list becomes really significant is when you go from maybe no risk to a low risk. We see that. Where we might not see that otherwise, or a low risk to a medium risk, we'll see that. Change is the bigger deal. And one of us, the nice thing about having this many people and Katie, hopefully one of us connects with the kid. There are certain kids, Hayden's like, I got this. And there's other kids, Hayden's like, I've tried, it's your turn, and it works for me, or it doesn't, and then it's Tia's turn. There's other kids Tia's working with. So just having multiple adults that they have the opportunity to connect with. The other report that was on there was like an F list that we had created, so I think it was November 1st, we had, if my memory is right, 96, we had kids with three or less, three, two, or one Fs. There was 96 Fs. And we got that down to 57 at the end of the semester. So we kind of divided and conquered again that list of kids. How do we help you? What do you need? It's crunch time. So we've seen success from it for sure. It's all hands on deck. Our staff is very willing, which is amazing, to pick up ninth grade classes. So it's not, certainly not a one-person project. I have a couple of students here from tennis and cheer. You guys can come, have a seat.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Mason Ramirez. I'm a senior this year. I was a freshman in 2020, the 2021 year. So yeah, I was, I remember coming into school, being scared. And eighth grader tells you they're not nervous about coming into high school, they're lying. I've been there. I imagine you were there. And I, yeah, I just remember a lot of my teachers coming in, like, he mentioned Mr. Hoffman earlier, who was my English teacher my freshman year. He was, he was very welcoming, made me feel welcome, allowed me to ease into it. The tennis coach, Mr. Cloggy, he was kind of the first person I knew in the building. He also helped out a lot. And then, yeah, I just miss Cooney, like a lot of teachers, just, I don't know, I can picture being a scared 14-year-old and coming in and seeing my teachers and making the whole process easier.
My name is Tracy Short. I'm a sophomore this year. And I did like the summer bridge thing, and it like kind of really helped me guide through the school a lot easier than I thought I would, because when I came in, I had no idea like where rooms are, I had no idea other hallways led into other hallways. And so like, when I got here and when I did like the summer bridge, it really helped me connect and feel like all the things that I needed to know before I actually came in, because as a scared 13-year-old child, I was just not knowing what to do. And Ms. Shoup and Ms., sorry, I'm blanking right now. Ms. Shoup and Ms. Miller were the ones who taught it, and they really helped all of us, I believe, feel really welcome and feel really happy to be here, so.
So can we ask questions?
Yeah.
So as a freshman, you had that level of support. What about the other kids that weren't in that program? Did they miss out, do you feel, or was there a connection that you could make with some of them to kind of help them ease into what was happening? Or you're like your best friends that were at whatever middle school, it would be Walt Clark?
Yeah.
Yeah. So did you connect with them a little bit and kind of guide them?
Well, some of my friends weren't, didn't go. And so I kind of helped them around the school and kind of helped them find their teachers and everything. But some of the kids that didn't go, I feel like were really left out, because like they didn't know where anything was. They didn't even know like what time you would be able like leave school for like lunch or something. And we're like, what time you needed to get back in order to get back on time? And I kind of helped us, because a lot of those kids just like feel like they're superior to me, because I'm small. But like, a lot of those kids feel like they just know everything, but when they get here, it's a huge school, they don't know what to do. And so I tried to be as kind as I could and try to direct them. But a lot of the teachers were really helpful, and it was hard to see them get confused, but also kind of like a ha-ha, you didn't come to this.
So you felt like you had the advantage total?
A little bit, yeah.
Which is okay. So as a senior, what was the impact for you? Has it carried through all the way? Were you avid at the start as a freshman?
I did freshman seminar.
Seminar. So what impact has that had for you?
Yeah, definitely, it allowed me to, you know, they talk about like study habits, there were a lot of those. I remember we did a project, it was called our passion project, where we learned about, we did a presentation about a passion that we had. Mine was, it's about baking bread, which is funny thinking about, but it, yeah, it gave me a chance to flush out a presentation and think about what I'd like to do in the future and apply that through different, a lot of different venues. And it was just, a lot of good things came from that, a presentation about bread. So it may seem like simple rudimentary, but it's the foundation for a lot of important things that you need throughout high school and your days to come.
So it gave you direction, kind of?
Yes, I would say so.
If I'm not mistaken, are you involved in the culinary program or?
I'm in pro-study, if you're familiar, because I think you presented. I did, yeah, yeah. The Takiho Express. Yep, 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 yep.
Can we have the rest of you have questions?
I sort of do. I guess there were about five things in here that I'm really concerned that we're getting, that the grants going away, along with the other funding we had. So like the supplement that we had in another bucket is also going away, and I don't like it. So I'm just going to say that out loud, because we are seeing such great results from this. And it's tough, right? And so I know that as like schools are making their decisions and having to do some tough decisions, I also just see that some of these things that we have tried, that have been the big changes, really shouldn't be grant-funded. So that's not even, like, I'm not saying that to us, I'm saying that to the people who are deciding funding. It's really ridiculous that so much of what we get is transitional, because we can't say that we care about having educated adults if we don't actually spend the money to educate youth. And especially at the critical times, right? So I, we have seen this, and I appreciate that there are several big checkpoints in here and several ways that you're getting supported, and that, you know, we're looking at things differently. And I worry that even small shifts in funding are going to have less time. And we're talking about major shifts in funding. So whoever cares about school funding needs to hear that.
Anybody over there?
I have a question. Have you done, or do you plan to do the Link Program, be one of those mentors?
I missed, I was, I think I was asked to do it, but I did not.
Okay.
I can't do it because I'm an underclassman right now, but if I, but when I become an
Thank you both for spending time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate hearing your perspective on this.
And actually, I do have a question, but it's for Rob.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was good.
Cool. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you. All right, Rob. So my question is, with the loss of funding from these two major sources and perhaps from some others, what is next year going to look like in regard to this program? Or do you know?
The talk, because we don't know. But the talk would be, again, hopefully, the way FTE shuffles out in the schedule is a thing. Keeping a ninth grade coordinator for one or two sections, not full-time. Everything else up there is full-time. So a lot of what we did in the four years, we knew this day was coming, and so we tried to create more permanent things. But I know Jamie, I know Hayden has asked me and has talked to Jamie about how do we keep part of what you're doing off my plate, basically? Because otherwise, the work's going to get done, it's just going to be one less person. So people will find a way. But would it be nice to have more funding? Let me think about that, and I'll get back to you. Yes.
It would.
Of course it would.
And we're going to have to pay for it somewhere. That's the other thing I need to say out loud. Again, I know it's not all us, but we're going to pay for it somewhere.
Yep.
So do we want to do it smart, or do we want to do it hard? Just saying.
Want to and have to sometimes.
Yeah.
So I, it's in the works to keep part of it. Again, that's not a guarantee because of FTE and where it has to go and all the things that have to be done. But I know it's a discussion.
Question or comment from Bill?
We have been in true support of the program as far as providing additional support. Like, the district has provided additional support outside of the grant. So I just want to highlight that, like, we're a true supporter of the benefits for kids. So that conversation continues, the support will be there. Rob's just trying to scare everybody. I'm glad it's working. Twenty years, so he's been on negotiations, so I see his strategy. I'm just pointing out, the support will be there.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. And I'm also saying that to the people who are not in our district, right?
Can you write that down and sign it for me, Bill?
My pen's not working.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking time.
Yep.
And thanks for calling those kids to come, because.
I pulled one from cheer and one from tennis. Like, they're all working, and I got practice, and I got like, yeah, so.
That was great.
Yeah, so. Our kids are working hard.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All righty.
Yeah.
All right. So our next item would be beginning of our discussions for the upcoming board meeting that we have on the 27th of March. And this will be the same kind of thing, we'll have the presentation, we'll let them go through all of that, and then we'll go around with questions, just like we normally do. Okay, and so we're starting with, let me think what it is. Oh, yes, the arbitrator report.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer. So the recommendation, provide the board an opportunity to discuss the arbitrator report, to accept or reject the arbitrator report pursuant to Section 8-5-5 of the memorandum of understanding. So the previous discussion on February 21st is, you first just accepted, the board accepted and reviewed the arbitrator report. So that was a step. So the next step here is, I just want to highlight, within the five days of the board's review of the arbitrator report, either party may request to meet to discuss arbitrator report. So there wasn't a request to talk about the report. So the board should accept or reject in whole or in part the report of the arbitrator no later than 30 days, which we have that extension. So that's what the vote will be at the next board meeting on the 27th, I believe. So the arbitrator hearing in this matter was conducted on December 7th before Mr. Snyder, the arbitrator selected by the parties. So a part of it is according to the Act, so the Equal Pay for Equal Worked Act was part of the concern, a part of the grievance. According to the Act, does not prohibit all differences in payment of wage rates. It only prohibits differences based on sex as the term is defined in the Act. So the way we place teachers is it's neutral, so it's not based off a gender. So conclusion, I can read the whole conclusion, but the recommendation is that on the basis of the above facts and discussion, the arbitrator makes the following recommendation, that the grievance be denied. So at this time, I'll leave it for discussion.
Okay. And we'll start over with Stu, just go around if you have questions in particular regarding this.
I had a question or two for you when we talked about this at the, at the last board meeting. I don't have anything else to ask.
No questions for me.
So I guess I have a question as far as in this, so one person filed this grievance, but it affects presumably multiple people. Like roughly, how many people are, would, are, would affect it? Do you know what I mean?
So without exact numbers, we pull a specific year to see, right? Because you pull of all our new hires, and then you take a look to see who's left from that class. But as far as going into individual ones and, you know, seeing, so who has three years, who has four years, like, we haven't done that piece.
Okay.
So the answer is it could be less than 100 people.
Okay.
But the people were placed appropriately.
So can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yep. So every year, through negotiations, we have an agreement of how we place teachers. So what we do is we follow what the agreement is. So back, back when we condensed the salary schedule from step zero to four to four, like, that was an agreement that we had with the association, and that's how we placed people that year. And in the following years, like, from that place to where we're at right now, like, we look at how you have retention strategies and how you have attracting strategies. So attracting and giving more years to new staff coming in, that's how we place them. So everybody coming in has a different placement than let's say 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. So it's different agreements every year.
And so in negotiations, when this topic came up, the decision was, we, it was known that this was going to happen, but the decision was made that that was okay?
So I'm not understanding that question exactly, because every year, it's a different decision, right? So 16 people agree, and then back then, it could be 24 people that agree to how placement is done, because you have critical questions, and there's a deep discussion about what that looks like. So every year, it's agreed upon. So everybody signs, the contract is ratified by the association, and the contract's accepted by the board. So then, when that goes through, like, we follow to a T on how you place people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dawn?
So I guess a follow-up on that would be that, given that we do have the negotiations process, if there are, like, one of the mechanisms to have this stay on our radar, but maybe, you know, looked at more robustly, is to have negotiations do it.
Correct.
Would be, right? Because we do it every year. And every year, it's different.
Right.
Okay. So that, I'm just like trying to, because I realize that this is official, and that's one thing, but that doesn't mean that there aren't, we're not constantly talking about working conditions and all of that.
Correct.
So there's always a mechanism to.
There is, like, one year it could be a critical question.
Okay.
You know, it could come back to the conversation of that's something that's moving forward for negotiations and that's something that we would look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
The only thing I would suggest is for all of us, if you have any time during the time of negotiations, to be able to sit in and see that process that they go through. It helps answer that question for us.
Yeah.
And I know you can't do that if you're working full-time, but if, you know, if there's an opportunity, even for an hour, to just see that process.
Right.
Or at the end of the day, is kind of when that happens.
Right. And, and for human resources, like, we follow the agreement, right? Like, someone can't come to us and say, "Well, you know, instead of nine days of leave, I'd like 25 days of leave," right? And then we go back to the agreement, well, this is what the agreement is, right? So, so people can problem solve a lot of things, but this is why we're consistent and we follow rules and procedures for this reason.
Right. It's got the pros and the cons.
Right.
Like, but it also is the process, which is why it...
Kind of fits our whole issue of retain and recruit, because we make those adjustments for purpose and it's helping us hire staff or hold staff.
We did, because back in 14, 15, it was decided, so how can we catch up to other districts? Right? So if you condense the three, three rows, then basically set it starting off at 30,000 or starting off 35,000.
Okay. Anybody else?
Actually, Bill, I, I believe I asked you this last time, but I want to make sure I'm remembering it correctly, that the process we use is very consistent across school districts, right?
It is.
Yeah.
Every, every district has a way to place teachers.
All right.
And specific guidelines for that reason. Because when that act came out, like, the great thing that we had is, like, here's the system we have in place, right? It's not based off a gender. It, it's based off a year's experience and based off of education.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. The next item, 4.2, is the first reading policy IKF, which is graduation requirements. Melissa?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. Tonight I have with me my Executive Director, Theo Robeson of Secondary Education. Need more chairs up here. And Tiffany Miller, our Director of Curriculum and Learning Design. Tonight they're going to share with you a change in policy that's really been triggered by state statute. And this is, is that there's some new social studies standards and the class of 2028 is going to need to meet these standards, so we will need for you to approve new graduation requirements so that we're in compliance. So they're going to give you some history and where we're going next, or we're asking you if we can go next.
So our STRIVE 2025 connection is focus area one, student achievement, and focus area two, stewardship of resources. And as a district, what our main goal is, is to eliminate any barriers to allowing our students to graduate within the four-year graduation rate. And we want to be in alignment with the resources to reflect the needs of the identified inside of our strategic plan. And so as it relates to the conversation tonight, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Tiffany Miller, will give us a lot more details about our new progression for social studies.
Great. So, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I am Tiffany Miller, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design. So up here, we start with our Y. And so when we look at this state statute, this was actually passed by Governor Polis in 2020, and when this was signed into action, they gave school districts really three years to figure out, how are we going to put this into place? And how do districts make sure that it really makes sense for them to put this in their social studies progression? So what we put together for you is our timeline, knowing that they always give us a little bit of a heads up when standards are going to change. We wanted to really document our progress in detail, out what we've worked with our teachers on and making sure that we're really having a collaborative process between our social studies teachers and our ILTs, along with our social studies, Tosa, Caitlin, Neill, and that's here as well. So when you start looking at October of 2021, we really started to tackle that conversation of what does this mean for Thompson School District and how do we respond to that state statute that was passed? So on this slide, we have what our neighboring districts have done and highlighted in that blue color is what our neighboring districts are doing. So when they took that state statute, it was a nice fit into their current ninth grade courses and what we noticed in Thompson, our, our progression does look a little bit different. And so we had to really sit down with our teachers and say, "Okay, how are we going to make now a, a new progression to meet the needs of the state statute?" So that's what this represents up here. So through that conversation, our teachers really started looking at what standards are in each of those courses and decided we needed to come up with a new course and really start looking at a possible new social studies progression and that would best meet the needs for our current students and our district. So when we think about what the progression really is going to look like, this is where the work started becoming really exciting and fun for our teachers. So continuing on our timeline, looking at 2023, the teachers really started saying, "Okay, how do we ensure that our kids are college community ready?" And they determined that we were going to create that new world history and geography course and ensure that it is at the ninth grade level. One, if it's state required with that standard, we want to hit as close as we can when students are not doing it their senior year, we want to make sure that they're doing this early on. And the teachers came up with really making sure those standards were closest to the ninth grade year. So on the next slide, we're going to start looking at what that possible recommendation is. And so something that we are proposing is in order to meet that state statute, that IKF would need to be updated and include that world history and geography course in order to meet those statute standards in that course, along with what the current policy also states, is that we would have civics in there with one credit and the world or US history. So what we're doing is combining that world history and geography course, but we're going to add it in on the next slide. You will see that this is what the proposed change would be in order to meet CDE's guidelines with that state statute included, that it would have that world history and geography course. Again, that's a new one, along with civics and then in addition to that one and a half social studies credits. This is for the graduating class of 2027, which is next year's freshman. When you do the math, it's, we've done it a lot of times, so it's that new freshman class, so 2027. So here we provide for you each of those courses, what is currently required per CDE state statute, and then what are some of those acceptable alternative courses, like that AP human geography, that is, that's where we would award that credit and, of course, that aligns directly with CDE. The state definitely has changed some of their grad guidelines as well, which you'll see, modern America, economics, those are no longer required per CDE, but they certainly are courses that students can take to meet that other credit piece. So the world history and geography, again, that new course that we're adding in to our progression, along with civics, those are both required per CDE. And then, of course, kids would need to take some other options on there, but that's where that choice comes in. So here is a possible progression. Again, certainly meeting with our teachers over time, this is this year's current eighth graders. They would register for that world history and geography course next fall. They would do that as a freshman course for the year long, and then, of course, as you go on for sophomore and juniors, those are options they have. This is what the teachers created as kind of the ideal progression, so it does shift around some courses grade level. But I want to make sure everybody understands, the, the teachers had a lot of great conversation around moving that civics course later on, when kids are really becoming ready to be voters, when they're starting to make some financial decisions, when they're starting to work and understand, "I need to have a savings account and what does it mean when I go buy a car? I can't just put that on a credit card." Those are conversations they had at length of really deciding, how do we get that when they're just about to go into the community and not as 15-year-olds getting into ninth grade, just starting to figure out what high school is? So they decided really moving that on would make more sense as they're closer to being community-ready. So that is what the teachers have come up with for the possible progression. So things to consider, next year will be the first year of this proposed progression and for one year, we will have students that have more of one course versus the other just to catch up. And then currently, right now, Caitlin and the team of teachers have been really working hard on developing units of study to make sure, one, we're meeting those guidelines, but that we're doing what's best to meet all of those state standards that go along with that statute.
More questions? All right. We'll start with Denise this time. Do you have anything?
Is there any impact on staffing or needing more teachers out of this?
Needing more, no. Will it change for a year of possibly what teachers teach? Because we really need, it might be, I have taught always ninth grade, I might be shifting now to a 10th grade course. That possibly could happen, yes.
Alexandra? No? Doc?
Can you take this class even if, like, starting next year, you can take this regardless, even if you're not a freshman, right?
Correct.
Good. Good, because we should. And so I hope that we actually make sure that it's, like, broadcast available, because the fact that there are students right now who don't have that information is very concerning to me. And I also, I mean, I understand that there was a lot of work that went into this, but since we can register about 16, I think that there is value in talking about that, even if that's not the whole class, right? Like, I understand there's a lot more incidents, but there are some civic engagement things that 16, well, freshmen even wanting to get involved in, I think it's worth including in some of these other classes. So hopefully, we can do that as well, as we continue to work on it.
Some things have to be done twice.
Sure.
As far as very good topics, so it's a bit, one maybe in another area.
Yeah.
Impact on curriculum, as far as materials.
So they're working on units of study and they really have a lot, because it's condensing, it's not condensing two courses, but it's taking two and kind of putting them into a year-long progression. They've really done a great job of pulling all of their resources together. The thing that's unique around social studies, you would have to have, like, seven textbooks to meet Colorado state standards, and so that's why we've really decided to, to do some of our own. And then we're looking at, right now, using some document-based questions, which is a resource that we've used at some schools, and they're finding it very, very strong to support this course as well.
Stu?
Do students still take US history in eighth grade?
Yes.
For a year?
Yes.
I'm surprised to see that economics is no longer a required class, and I know that's not a district decision, that that, that's a CDE decision. Having taught in the high school during the time that economics was first introduced and then as time went on, I'm just very surprised, because there was such a push that every student needed to take an economics class, and I know it's available as AP macro and AP micro. At that time, that would not have been a satisfactory change and as, I'm actually just talking to you about this, Tiffany, because I know that you didn't have anything to do with this decision. I'm very surprised at that. And I'm also surprised, even though kids take a year of, of US history in eighth grade, that modern America is no longer a requirement. I guess I, all I'll say about that is, I'm very surprised at that as well, that, that decision was made. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I actually do want to echo that, because my 21-year-old, literally an hour before I got here, said, "Why did no one teach me taxes?" Uh-huh. She went here, right? And so, like, the, we, you know, I really do think that there is some stuff that, like, kids don't know they need when they, we make it optional and it could, and then they wake up one day and go, "Oh, my God, I really need that." So just hoping we can pepper some of this stuff in that people tell us later is practical. You know, it may not be a whole class, but they don't know they need it until later.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? Thank you very much. Basically, all of them. All right. 4.3 is first reading policy G BBD, staff fringe benefits. Bill?
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer, followed by our expert.
Hi, Dorothy.
Good morning, Dorothy. Good morning. Dorothy, please.
So we have the privilege to be here for the next three presentations.
Yeah, I was noticing she had a lot tonight. There was a lot.
All right. So I'm in full support of Dorothy, so.
So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. Proposing a policy change to G BBD, which is our fringe benefits policy, governs our health insurance and our Section 125 flexible spending. These proposals are based on a change from our insurance carrier. As you know, we've been with CEBT for many, many decades at this point in time, and they have, in the last two years, eliminated the 100% participation requirement for the membership, which gives us some flexibility to not have to enroll all staff who are 100% in those insurance benefits. So by making that change, that would save us a little bit of money, because a staff member, we enroll in HRP. We are paying $281 a month for HRP that they may not want, may not ever use. And this would, by making this change, if they do not participate, they would be enrolled in our life insurance, making the monthly premium for those individuals drop to $2.80 a month. So that is a benefit there. We made some updates around the JIC, our committee, how folks come to membership, because we don't want specific appointment requirements to be a barrier for folks who want to participate in our work. If someone calls me and says, "Hey, do you have an opening on JIC?", I want to be able to say, "Yes, as a matter of fact, come join us." Because it's a great committee. It's so much fun.
And, and there's a lot of phone calls that come in about this.
I wonder if that actually did happen or not, but either way.
I actually have had it happen. And then updating the responsibility, we, the insurance benefits negotiation subcommittee has not existed, at least in the last eight school years, and I'm guessing a whole lot longer than that, so let's make that update.
Yeah, it's just reflecting current practice. So basically, you just want to look at board policy and reflect current practice, that they match.
And then the third and biggest change is in this flexible spending accounts. We currently, when our forfeited funds are over $5,000, we bring it to, to you for approval of what we are going to do with it. We'd like to increase that to $10,000. As this policy hadn't been changed for 11 years, with inflation and the increase in flex spending amounts that folks can put in, it's just prudent. We have years like this here where we're still in front of you, but in the last few, we have been within that five to 10 threshold.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Alexandra? Stu? Denise? Okay. Moving on to, what's our next one?
To the next is our renewal, so the really fun part of the year. So this ties to human talent and stewardship of resources in STRIVE 25. And our purpose is to provide you with our JIC's recommendation for our renewal for the 24, 25 school year. So the JIC is responsible for recommending a comprehensive employee health insurance package that allows employees choice of plans and is competitive with the current market costs. To do that, we start our review and evaluation of our insurance plans in September. We receive monthly utilization reports from the trust on both our individual utilization and trust-wide utilization. As some of you may be aware, I also am very active with the CEBT Board of Directors and am active in those meetings. And we have conversation about what's going on in the trust, what's going on in our insurance. We talk to folks outside and we review all of this data in preparation for tonight. The JIC understands that our, we are charged with making this informative and comprehensive for district and for our staff members, and we do understand this is a key factor in attracting and retaining our high-quality staff that we have. So after thorough conversation of the data, we are, the recommendation from the JIC is to continue to offer the three benefit plans that we currently have in place. As you may recall, we made a major change two years ago and we're starting to see the results as those plans mature. And for those staff who are currently still enrolled in the HRP... And for those staff who are currently still enrolled in the HRP plan, continue to maintain that for those staff members. The recommendation was to pay the single select rate, life and dental premiums for those full-time employees who choose to enroll, and the pro-rata share of the select rate for part-time employees based on their percentage of their assignment. Continue to pay these HRP life and dental premiums for the full-time employees who are on that. And there will be members on that, even though we won't necessarily be bringing new members on. Folks who are on that can stay on that plan until separation or reduction in FTE or electing another medical plan. And then we would continue to apply our select four contribution to our employees' out-of-pocket premiums to buy up to either the PPO5 or the Kaiser Plan, or if they are needing to enroll independent coverage, use that towards the dependent cost for the select plan. So the net effect for the renewal health is a 7% overall annual increase. That is on medical alone. We were zero increase for the dental plans this year. And it's an estimated total annual district cost for the health, life, and dental insurance of $17,334,000 for the next budget year.
Which is great, like, 7%. You think of, what, 7%? Or roughly about $1.2 million or so. That is way less than what other districts are seeing. You know, you're starting to see the double digits. And for the last couple of years, you know, it's been great. So, you know, 7%, we've had conversations that we're pretty lucky to be in the position we are. And just the work that, you know, Dorothy's team does, analyzing, assessing, and seeing where we can save dollars, and she's done a great job over the last few years, and just the rebates that we've been able to give back to our employees has been great. So to see 7%, plus traditionally, the board has conversations about this and decide if they're gonna, you know, pass it, you know, where the district's covering it and not having a conversation with the employees and having them pay a portion of it. And that's what other districts have conversations about, too. So traditionally, the board has covered.
It's a great recruitment tool that we have, to be able to say, "Hey, we'll cover employee-only coverage at 100%."
Wonderful. Okay, questions? Don? I didn't have any, Stu?
Is Vision Insurance an option available to members of the staff? Is it covered at all?
It is.
With a benefit?
The employees pay 100% of the premium.
Okay.
Single premium will be, with this renewal, $9 a month for those members. It's a frame benefit every two years of $160 for frame, for preferred, $15 copay to go in and have that eye examined for lenses. We cover progressive bifocals, which is a very rare and unique benefit, and an expensive one.
Sure.
There's contact lens benefits, so our employees can and do participate in that. They also have the flexibility to enroll staff. Their families, their spouses, in a separate package for Vision than for medical. My personal example is I'm on the medical only, but my whole family is on our Vision plan because of the richness of the benefit it provides compared to my spouse's option.
Yeah, I know that even though the actual dollar amount for the monthly premium is very low, for those of us who wear glasses and eyepack lenses and so on, having this benefit available is an important one. So I'm glad to know that it is available. Thank you.
Denise, questions?
No questions.
Alexandra? Okay. And then we have 4.5, joined Insurance Committee District Forfeiture Recommendation.
So, thank you, Madam President. We're moving right along through these today.
Yes, we are.
So this recommendation is made pursuant to GBBD, which is the Staff Fringe Benefits Policy that we just discussed. We have three things we can do according to the Treasury. I'll give, with these forfeited funds that are returned, we can keep them to defray reasonable administrative costs, which are any fees we pay to a third party. We don't, we administer this plan internally, so all of our internal expenses for this plan. We can use them to reduce required Section 125 premiums for a following year. So for example, if I contribute $60 a month, we could take this among the participants and reduce all of them at one time of that dollar amount. Or we can return to, return them to the participants as taxable refund for the participating employees. That's everyone, whether it's their funds that were unused or not, they get a portion of those funds. And we have done this in the past. After conversation this year, the recommendation from the JIC was that the forfeited funds from the 22-23 school year, which is an amount of $10,644.83, be used to defray reasonable administrative costs, which is our direct inhouse expenses. To administer the plan, this is work of Human Resources staff members, a lot of work from Gordon's payroll team to administer the plan. And all of our school secretaries and building administrators are part of administering this plan through the annual open enrollment process. So this honors that a portion of the time of the wages that the staff are putting in to make this happen for our participants.
Questions? I don't have any questions. Stu? Denise? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to JIC.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate that. All right. Next item on our agenda, 4.6, is the New Vision Charter School Amendment. Oh, hi, Todd.
Oh, hi, Mark.
Guess I wasn't expecting you.
Guess not. Surprise.
I sort of thought it would be Melissa again. That's not she.
This is teamwork.
This is New Vision, not Loveland Classical. I was surprised.
I'll be here all night, so.
All right, Todd, go ahead.
Okay. Evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Picone, Chief Operations Officer. Tonight, just for a quick review, for the board's discussion is an amendment to the New Vision Charter School Agreement. So quickly, I'll review some background of how we got here, the contract update, and then next steps. So in the current agreement, you can see under Section 2.2, the student welfare and safety. So as we took Loveland Classical's agreement in the last several months, reviewed it, we noticed that the safety section within both agreements did not have the language that we currently need. So right now, that is all we have as far as student welfare and safety is what you see under 2.2. So as the board's aware, we have different systems in place, different state statute that we need to fall under. So then we then created, worked with council, the subsections 2.21 and 2.22. So on the next page, you'll see, this is an abbreviation of what was added. So there were requirements around armed and security staff on campus. So if there is security staff armed on campus, specific to charter schools, what is the training, what are the requirements behind that? So it goes in the detail in the attachment, as far as the hours of training, the types of training, and then what they have to do reporting. So it defines that. The actual requirements for specific safety plans. So we also noticed that we require specific plans for our schools because of how charter agreements work with board policy, that we also have to then put in their contract that they are required to follow specific safety plans and also require training. So you'll see, those are just highlights of the amendment that's attached. But what it does is really outline the two requirements to follow, our board policy and current practice and procedure that is out there. So this is, as I mentioned, the same language as in the Loveland Classical contract that was previously approved. But by advice by the council, we didn't want to sit without this amendment in place for this year, for the start of next year. So, any questions?
We'll start over with Stu.
I do have a question. So I know the charter schools have been using, like, outside security groups largely because there aren't SROs available from the police department or whatever, or the sheriff's department. If it were a case that there were an SRO available, would this need to be changed? Or would this encompass that?
It would encompass that. Our goal is to work with both LPD and LCSO to see if we can get a true law enforcement coverage rather than private sector. So the hope is that within this next year, that the staffing level is changed enough that we can actually staff with an LPD and then work with the charters, really give them guidance on how to contract in with the entities to use law enforcement rather than private. And that's why they ended up here, was just because there was no staffing available from Loveland and/or County to help at this point.
Thank you.
So is this in place now, and they have addressed all of the issues? Or are they in process?
They, it's, I would say, safety is a continual process. But we have reviewed their practices to make sure that it's up to policy and practice. And we now have a system in place with them to check in more frequently to make sure that this stays in place. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I will note, New Vision has been highly cooperative and responsive and has been a good partner, so we appreciate it.
And just one more note, their board has, they had their first read on this last, yeah, last Monday, and they'll finalize. And there was no questions from them.
Will they hear back then at some point?
Yeah, so this will be back for just approval for the next meeting.
On the 27th?
On the 27th, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. 4.7, Ferguson Calendar Variance for 2024, 2025, 2025, 2026.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seabrooks, Chief Human Resources Officer. I have the privilege to present with Dr. Jason Germain, our Ferguson TCC principal. So basically, tonight's about recommending to the board about approving the calendar variance request for Ferguson High School. So months ago, you approved the school calendar for the two-year. So after that gets approved, Ferguson kind of takes a look and kind of meets their needs with the calendar. So they present a calendar, and this is similar to what we've done through other years. Presentation will focus on Shrive, Area 2, Ensure Learning Environment Support of Positive Culture and Climate, and that all starts with the calendar of what that looks like. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our amazing principal, Dr. Germain.
Thank you. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, good evening. The mission of Ferguson High School is to create alternative experiences for learners that are different and not less. And my hope of this calendar is that it delivers exactly that in a very non-exciting manner, as a calendar work can be. So there is fundamentally nothing different in the structure and sculpt of this calendar than what you've approved in prior years that I've come and presented this calendar. It's a four-quarter system that starts on the same day for both staff and students and ends on the same day for both staff and students across the district. One thing I'll point out is that other schools, at least at the high school level, begin day one with ninth graders only. We begin with our entire school. One of the reasons for that is that first quarter, when you're on a quarter system, is always short instructional minutes. And so we need to build as many instructional minutes into those first eight and a half weeks of school as we possibly can. Other things that look fundamentally different from the other schools are our parent-teacher conferences. It's really important to us as an alternative high school to have as much contact with our families as possible. So instead of doing conferences once a semester, we do them once a quarter, albeit for a shorter amount of time, which we can get away with because we have less families overall that we're serving. Let's see, other things that will look fundamentally different on there from the other schools, we also have an end-of-quarter workday that's a teacher workday, no students at the end of each quarter. So you'll see one roughly around our traditional counterparts, parent-teacher conference time in October and again in March. We also have an end-of-quarter workday at the end of either semester. So usually, the last day in December, the school's in session, and then again in May. Our May Day is also shared with our May graduation, as is the December date, when we have a decision made internally to host a graduation in December. Let's see, I think I covered much of that. Other things, just so you know, our teachers do report on the same day. Historically, when we were on Hexters, that was not possible. Moving to quarters allowed us to continue to meet the needs of the alternative learner, but also meet the needs of our staff and their professional development by making them available for Tens Week and other opportunities throughout the year that, you know, on a Hexter system, used to not afford us. Other things relative to teacher time, teachers do teach six out of eight periods in our building, like they do in the other schools in per the negotiated agreement with the union.
Questions? Denise? Alexandra?
So does this apply to the TCC as well, or just Ferguson?
That's a great question. It does not apply to Thompson Career Campus because we're sharing those students largely with the other four traditional high schools. It makes sense for us to align the calendar with the other high schools. Additionally, because we offer concurrent enrollment, our community college partners are on a semester basis. And so having it aligned with that just makes sense. For our Ferguson students who participate in Thompson Career Campus, we navigate that between instructors on both sides of the house to make sure those students aren't harmed in any way by the difference in calendar.
I don't have any questions. Stu?
Jason, what's the thinking behind having the Ferguson calendar on a quarter system rather than a semester system?
As you know, our students are, I think this year, 96% at risk of not graduating high school on time. And part of that, the impact of some of those at-risk indicators, leads to high-level mobility, students who may be in and out of crisis. So offering quarter and offering quarter credit allows a student to be successful, but they don't have to be successful for 18 or 20 weeks in a row, like they do at our traditional high school counterparts. It also allows our intervention system time to work without impacting an entire semester. So when a student's not in a position to either participate full-time in our program or even at all, it's a short amount of time that they're not with us or that they're on a shortened schedule, that type of thing, with the hopes that they rebound from whatever was impacting them and get back in full stride as soon as possible.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
You bet.
All right. We're back with Youth Shelter Name and Update.
I know, it's exciting. I know, it is.
You can hardly wait to come join us, right?
Good evening again, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Picone. With me tonight, I have Kristin Battigie, Director of Operations. And she's going to review an exciting project that we've all know about, and this is a pretty pivotal step in that project. So I'll turn it over to Kristin and have her tell you all about it.
Thank you. I'm Kristin Battigie, Director of Operations. So thank you for having me, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. So I get to talk about the youth shelter, which is very exciting. I also just want to acknowledge, we have Nicole Armstrong from Matthew's House as well, who will be the operators in the back. So the connection to Strive 2025 really connects to most of the items on there, but highlighting 2.3, collaborating with community partners to provide service for unhoused youth and engage all in the process to name the shelter as well. So we'll give an update on the building, kind of where we are in that process of renovation, design, all of that, and then get into naming of the shelter. So here is the kind of overall timeline as we've, you know, secured funding throughout. We're in the kind of building design. We have our permit in the queue for building construction and hope to start that in June. So, and then open fourth quarter of this year is the, is the plan.
You love that timeline, don't you? Yes.
So thanks. So I'm not going to review all of this, but just kind of a funding summary for this project. It's been pretty amazing how quickly this funding has come together. It's been a lot of work, and also just seeing the support for our youth is great. So at this point, just shy of $7 million, looking at both infrastructure as well as operational funds. So here is just some overall pictures of the project. We've got the floor plan on the left. I'm not going to walk through all of this, but I'm happy to answer questions at the end. There's also, isn't that a walk, is it on video?
Should be.
Okay, yeah. So down in the right-hand corner, that's a video that just gives you a little fly-through. We're not going to watch it right now, but thanks, Florley. So if you want to watch that... So if you want to watch that, you're welcome to. A few things have kind of changed, but it gives you just a nice idea of how that's laid out.
And sorry, when is the groundbreaking for this? Did we set a date for this?
May 3rd.
So we'll send you a calendar invite, but May 3rd will be the formal groundbreaking. Well, it'll be big. And we're set to open on time in the fall.
It'll be kind of wall breaking, actually. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have some sludge.
We'll have funding.
We don't want to break the ground. So getting into the naming process, so this is a district building, so it was important that we follow our Board of Education policy, FF and FFR. So we engage stakeholders throughout the process, so both through sending out surveys just to make sure we're gathering broad and diverse feedback as well as small group discussion. So we, like I said, engaged a number of stakeholders, so community students, former students, Laramie County, TEF, Matthew's House, of course, our McKinney Avento liaison and partners through the youth shelter process, which includes state level as well as Homeward Alliance, just a number of different partners. So parameters and guidelines as we've moved through this process, of course, our board policy was something that we had to follow through this. And another piece for just determining the name is looking at the Matthew's House. They're, I don't know if they're firm yet, the mission, vision and value, they are firm, so we got that proposed. But we also wanted to look at what their values and mission and vision are as in the process of thinking through that name. So we sent out a survey at the beginning of January, just asking community about those names, and that went to, again, a number of different groups, Pooter School District, Thompson School District, there was even engagement in Greeley with their student council. So really recognizing that this is a regional shelter. So with that, we had over 200 responses in proposed names. So Thompson School District, Matthew's House, kind of vetted through a few of those, just kind of whittling it down, things that didn't meet our, our parameters. And then convened with a small group, including some folks from Laramie County, current student and TEF as well, and just talked through what the vision of the name should be. So there's a lot of discussion around kind of alignment with Thompson School District names, where we have a lot of nature names. So that was a theme that we certainly saw in those survey results as well, something that's not trendy. Keep in mind, language changes, something that's simple, concise, and there were certain words that just were kind of trigger words for, for folks. So these are things that we don't want. We don't want it to be a center. We don't want it to sound governmental, and we don't want it to sound like another name. The place is one, so there is some, there is a place called the place. So, so just going through that and then whittling, if you want to go back one more, sorry, Laurlee. So we whittled down that, that list from over 200 to down to in the 70 range, and then through that process, came out with not necessarily names, but words and kind of themes that, that came out of that. And so then we convened another small group to kind of workshop those, those words. So, thank you. So there's a picture of what some of that looked like, one of the, the boards of talking about those nature words, some things that really stood out. So we had five names that really rose to the top of that process, and so we sent out another survey, just really wanting to make sure that we're engaging as many folks as we can. And so that survey went out at the end of February, February 28th, and within a matter of, I mean, the first day, I think we had over 200 responses.
600 within three days, yeah.
So total of just shy of 800 votes on these names, which was pretty amazing. It was sent out in both English and Spanish. And also, we asked a few questions just to make sure that we were getting kind of a representative voice within that. So there's a homelessness experience as well as foster care experience. So it was great to see that we had voices who have lived experience in the naming conversation. So the landing, something from one of the committees, they really wanted to, to talk about what these names kind of meant. We didn't put that in the survey because we know that as people are being introduced to the youth shelter, they're not going to get a description of what the name means. So that's why we didn't there, but it was important for the group that we're talking about that here. So the landing is one, just is a safe place to be. Also, we think about the mountains. That was a big theme throughout conversations of being here in Colorado. And Well Harbor is a similar kind of feel, but the landing really felt more like mountains. Marigold Mountain, of course, the mountain word. Marigolds are very resilient, so that came up there. And then Orchard View Station was a name that came from more of the history of Loveland. So cherries and train stations. So those were kind of just some of the, the reasons. There was also, there were also some Spanish words that rose to the top as far as names as well. So the landing, sorry, Laurlee. The landing is, so these three really rose to the top in that survey, and the landing is the one with the, the most votes and the recommendation. And I did have just a couple of, oh, I don't think I wrote it down, but there were some things, some, one of the questions on there was how these names made people feel. And makes you feel safe, Nicole, what were?
They, they were very inclusive. The landing was probably our most prominent name that came out of the top three. 90% of individuals selected the landing as the top, and they were able to identify similarly to the group that the landing is a place in which you can launch from, a safe environment, inclusive, and that was the theme of the words. We asked individuals to share what their feelings or emotions were when they heard these words, and so then they provided that feedback back to us. And so we have that list that we can share with you, some of the key takeaways.
Thank you. So we'll be coming back in a few weeks after spring break with the, the names to vote on.
Questions, where do I start, I think?
Maybe me, but I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
Not really a question, but a comment. When I looked at the names, Marigold Mountain sounded to me like the name of a spa or something like that. Actually, I was rather surprised it would have been in the top three because it was not a name that resonated with me.
It might have been the harbor.
Perhaps. She's not really a spa person either, but I don't know. So I looked at the landing and I thought, hmm, and the hum, the hmm wasn't a negative hmm. And so I thought, what are some synonyms for landing? I probably looked at a couple hundred synonyms, which is probably what people in the process did as well. And after that examination and after having eliminated Marigold Mountain, I decided that the landing is a really good name for this shelter, for what it stands for, for the opportunity that it will provide the students who live there. So I, I'm good with that name now.
Denise. All right, thank you. Great, thank you. All right. 4.9 is just our standard action consent items. That will be subject to change as we get our agenda set up for our 27th meeting. All right, Stu, it's your opportunity to talk to us about Casby and Dawn. You want also? Okay. So who's going first?
Dawn's going to start.
Okay.
Let me just preface, I will remark saying that she and I attended.
Thank you.
She one day, I another day, the Casby Winter Legislative Conference in Denver. Dawn went last Thursday, I went last Friday, and so we want to each take a couple of minutes to highlight some of the points from the day that we attended, and then I'll quickly give my regular report. You're on, Ked.
So it was a very, very action-packed day. We covered a lot of ground in the time that we had. Got to go to Capitol, talked about some of the bills that are on this list as well as some that are not, that you and I only need to connect on, is before Friday's meeting. And our keynote on Thursday was Attorney General Phil Wiser. And he, his office has grants that are coming out any minute now.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So they, they have some grant funding that's coming out that is really geared toward, the language will be around suicide prevention, smoking cessation, and then education to be preventative in those areas. And then he answered a lot of questions around a whole gamut of things that are related to, to both the additional grant funding and the challenges that are, that school districts are dealing with that end up having kind of a legal component. So he presented on some of the work that his office has been doing to try to be more supportive and clear on some of that, where his office provides support. And what was really fun is that there were several questions from our peers in the room who just were struggling with all sorts of things related to this stuff. And I was like, hey, this is what we do. And so I shared a little bit about our co-responder program. And Phil then encouraged everyone to ask for that to be the way that they all write their grants, as to, because it addresses so many of the needs as well as, right? So like everything that somebody had a question about, it meets their needs and, and also so many of the things that he really wants to have us have more support for. So his office is planning on learning more. They're very excited about that, and yeah, that was the highlight of the day.
All right. On Friday, the keynote speaker was State Treasurer Dave Young, and so part of what I'm going to tell you came from his remarks and some from a small group activity related to developing a legislative platform, which was the, the part of the particular, of the conference that I was particularly interested in attending. I knew that Colorado had low property taxes when compared with the nation. I didn't realize that Colorado has the fourth lowest property taxes in the nation, so that struck me. Another factoid that I found very interesting, we're all familiar with the best grants. I assume that the best grants were funded from the General Assembly. They are not. There is no money that's part of this multimillion-dollar best grant process that actually comes from the Colorado Legislature. He spent a lot of time in his remarks, talking about how important it is to let, to let legislators know our needs. Each legislator can introduce no more than five bills per session, and many districts meet with their legislators either in a small group meeting, sometimes as part of a dinner, et cetera, at least annually, if not more often, to discuss their needs. And many of the bills that are introduced at the state legislature actually come out of discussions that occur at these small group meetings with, with legislators. So I'm going, going to take the liberty of, of telling you what I hope that we're going to do. So I'm going to say now is not a summary of the meeting, it's what I took from the remarks that were made and the work that we did in a small group. I think it's important that we work to have our particular first platform ready to discuss with our local legislators next fall, before the next legislative session begins. It'll be our first attempt. It won't be perfect, but we have to start with something, and there are a number of good samples out there. I brought back samples from two large districts, one medium-sized district, Littleton Public Schools, which is about our same size, as well as a small district in the mountains. I also have a worksheet that I think will be very helpful that we can use as we begin to draft our first platform. I'm aware from listening to the State Treasurer and talking to the people in this small group, we're going to need some help with this first attempt, and Dr. Schaefer, I'm sure you will be able to help us. We may need to also call on Casby, we may need to, to call on our legal team. But I think it's important that we say that we're, we're ready to begin working on this, and as I said, hopefully to actually have a first draft ready to present to, to our local legislators next fall. So that's my summary of my day at the conference. Now, I'll very quickly just add some information. First of all, the bills that I include in my monthly reports to you are bills that are discussed at the two monthly meetings. So Treasurer Young mentioned a couple of bills that were of concern to him, and Dawn alluded to the fact that there were some bills probably that the Attorney General mentioned. I don't include those in the reports because I think my job is to report on this Casby legislative session, and so we can, we can update you as needed. In regard to the information at the top that's in yellow, if you could drop that just a little bit, I'm wondering, even though probably at the point next week or the week after when we meet with Gordon to talk about Revenue Matters, that he might be able to tell us in our two-plus-twos how much our PPR, our per pupil revenue, might increase without the budget stabilization factor. And so I won't go into any more detail than that in regard to the BASF. Please, if you haven't already, do read the information that's there in yellow. It's really exciting. Regarding some of the bills, the first bill, which is SRC 24-001, and deals with child sexual abuse accountability, you'll notice as you went through the report that there are several places where Superintendent Schaefer provided some feedback, in one case where Patty Verden provided some feedback. During the meetings, very often we're asked to go back to our districts and get information from either the superintendent or particular directors that Casby would find important and actually quite necessary in their lobbying efforts. And so one of those is located in that section where Dr. Schaefer provided feedback. In regard to HB 241044, which is the one dealing with additional para service retirees for schools, one of the things that Treasurer Young mentioned was how important the health of para is to the state of Colorado. It's of course important to retirees, to future retirees for the sake of retirement income, but he also spoke about how important para is to the health of the state economy, and that it's very important when boards have an opportunity to provide input to the legislature that, that we're supportive of what para is suggesting, whatever the bill happens to be, because it influences retirees and it also actually influences the entire economy. Just a couple of other things, I guess actually only one other thing, and that's in regard to the last item, which is Senate Bill 24049, content of materials in libraries. You'll see that the last bullet says that the Senate Education Committee voted on February 28th to postpone indefinitely this bill, which kills the bill. I actually testified a week ago Monday on this bill. I testified remotely to the, the state senate in opposition to the bill. I was one of five school board members from around the state who did this. Our objection is that this particular bill violated local control, and particularly for a district like ours, and what I discovered in talking to some other board members, is this is true pretty much around the state. Most school districts have very Most school districts have very robust, very well-vetted policies in regard to content of materials in libraries. And this particular bill would have said, we want a uniform standardized bill that will create a policy throughout the state. Having served as a teacher a number of years back, two or three different times on this particular committee for our district, I knew that our policy worked. And as I said, I was not the only person who testified against this particular bill. And the four or five of us who did testify received an email that our testimony was a prime reason that this bill failed. So when we talk about the voice of school board members, they do listen to us. They do care what we have to say. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Steve. All right. We are moving on to our study session discussion items, but a couple minutes break to get up. Okay, Tom, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening again, Madam President. For Education, Doc Schaefer, Tom Coney, Chief Operations Officer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Winger with Magellan Strategies. So as you'll see as we get into the presentation, they have a, they give up hints. But they have a portion of this presentation tonight to provide the board an update. So, so in that, we just want to give an update on our communication plan, what we've been doing. Magellan Strategies, what kind of phase we're going into now with the survey. And then just always just to touch on the future needs for the district. And again, this is just alignment with increasing our resources, alignment of resources reflect our needs identified in our strategic plan. So this schedule, this amazing schedule.
I'm lying.
I'm lying. But you know, it's, what it does show is.
Pretty well.
What I want to show.
It's very easy to read.
What I want to convey is really the last year and a half, as we talked about, that's been the putting together of the needs. So, you know, between MPC, you know, the board's been involved in that, community members, you know, that's really the work that's complete. So the, the transition of focus now is on community input. So that's really what we started in January. And as the board may remember, our first goal was to start with staff members, then work in the community, public survey. And then you'll see the timeframe then goes into board discussion in June and August. And then ultimate decision by the board of is there a board resolution then to go forward with the bond initiative? So just the overall timeframe, there was one star added I want to point out was that gold star there in the middle, if you haven't noticed that change. But that's when, that's when Ryan will talk about the survey. So our survey is projected to go out here in a few weeks. But I just wanted, you know, point that out because we are progressing along that communication timeframe. And just an update, so I do have to give a shout out to all the fellow cabinet members that, and Dr. Schaefer, it's been like a roadshow. So we've got like our bands and drums and, but we've showed up at almost all school buildings and done staff meetings for it. So it's been good to get in front of staff and that's part of the plan is to help them understand what our conversation is, what the ask could be. Before we go out to larger community, we have done a couple of community presentations. So the District Act, and then we did all schools, Berthitt SAC meeting, so about two, three weeks ago. Which goes into our, kind of the next phase, which we're moving into. Sorry, Laurie, go back a bit more. Is the community feedback. So we're going to go into larger feeder communication and presentations. Also our influencer groups, so we have a list of almost nearly a hundred community members, district-wide, that are going to be invited to two meetings. So one April, one probably late May. So we are really community influencers for the, for the district. So it's just those leaders within the district that give them an understanding of what our ask could be. So it's their ask, they can, you know, hopefully promote and then spread that true information out there. I did just want to point out the next slide. The other thing we've really put emphasis on is student input. So we've had a team just going out to all secondary schools at lunch and they set up a stand and staff just invites kids up to, hey, give us input on security, you know, our different buckets. But as you can see by the, the boards on the top left, you know, we do get some pretty funny comments, like cats and heated toilet seats came out of that.
Yeah.
But there's, there's important. But filtering that out, you know, you filter through some of the comments and the, just the, this is what I want. What's exciting is you just give them an open slate, a blank slate, and they come up with then tangible ideas that we now have, I mean, that true needs list that came right from, right from the kids. So, so we've been out at each school and then we've been to all Dr. Schaefer's student advisory committees. We've done workshops there as far as giving, getting input. So the same sort of process, but it, it's, it's exciting how, once the kids understand, you know, why there's people there with boards, how vested they are and how excited they are to come share their ideas. So from here, I'll turn it over to Ryan and have him talking about these items that we're stepping into.
Yeah, so just a brief update on the survey. It's my only slide, so I'm really gonna, I'm gonna milk it. As far as the timeline's concerned, we're, we're gonna launch the Monday after your spring break, so that'd be the 25th. You know, we feel like that's a pretty good time. Everyone's going to be back settled in. You know, we don't want to launch during spring break. Could have tried to launch before, but we just want to make sure we get all our ducks in a row before we launch. So even after the eighth, I mean, this is important to note, residents will still be able to complete the survey even after the eighth. We never actually close it because the last thing you want is someone to come across a link and try to take the survey and it says, your opinion doesn't matter, we've shut the survey, right? So, and on that schedule, final deliverables, so top lines, cross tabs, PowerPoint, verbatim responses, everything you need will be completed by April 15th. So that midway through April, we'll have a pretty good answer as far as what voter support is for these things. And, and on that note, as far as survey content, here's the kind of things we're going to ask. So benchmarks, just to kind of ease them into the survey, we'll ask things like, do you, an image rating of the district? Do you have a favorable or unfavorable opinion of the district? Do you approve of the job of doing educating students? Importantly for something like this, do you think the school district has financial resources necessary to provide students with a quality education? That perception matters, right? And then also the perception of, do you, you think the district is fiscally responsible and spends tax pay running wisely? Those kind of perception measurements, you know, the answers to those questions are important because if there is a red flag in one of those areas, it can kind of give you insight into why a bond measure may not be as popular as you'd think. And you don't fall into the trap of thinking, oh, if only we tweaked the, the bond measure, we could, you know, solve this. Maybe there's something underlying there. We don't often find that, but it's, it's possible and so we want to ask those benchmarks. The other thing we'll ask is questions about the attributes of a great school. So it's a question that we found is very helpful exercise for districts. Basically, you're asking voters, in this case residents, whether they have a child in school or not. Please indicate the importance of the following attributes in, in, you know, developing a great school. Things like attracting the retaining high-quality teachers, safety, a modern building with up-to-date technology, programming, all kinds of things. You know, the, the list is everything that's going to be at least somewhat important to vote, to, to the respondents. But sometimes it's good to see, hey, here's how they really prioritize. And it's just kind of good to know that moving forward, especially those people that don't have children in the district, but you know they're going to be a majority of the people who are going to vote come November. Do they look at these things differently than parents do? And then we'll get into the specifics of the bond measure questions. And so we'll actually be testing the three different options, right? The 160 million, 250, and 350. And the way that'll be structured is, is basically the 160 million will get you this with a list of bullet points. I don't think heated toilet seats is making the cut, unfortunately. And then the 250 will get you that plus these extras. The 350 will get you those plus these extras. And then we'll gauge support for those. And then we'll, we'll also just kind of walk them through information questions. Here's why the district is considering a bond measure. Here's why the need exists, right? Because especially for those people that don't have children in schools, a lot of it's going to be brand new to them. Like, oh, I hadn't thought about that. I hadn't thought about, you know, how it's, the growth in birth that is affecting the schools there, whatever the case may be. And then we're also going to include general support for an MLO for teacher salaries. So that will not have any kind of dollar amount or anything attached to it. It'll just be in general, and we'll probably use language like, would you support a modest property tax increase for teacher salaries? You know, we, we don't really want to say mill levy override because the average voter doesn't know what that is. So you kind of, kind of put it in plain English and say, property tax increase is what we're talking about, right? And so then, yeah, by April 15th, we'll have the presentation highlighting the overall results, but importantly also the important subgroups, right? Parents versus non-parents. Just so you know, the, the survey's going to be weighted to accurately, we accurately reflect what we anticipate turn out to be in November, right? So let's say we get a survey back and it's 80% parents. We know that's not going to be the case in November. And it's, it's never that extreme, but obviously parents are going to be a little bit more interested in taking this survey than non-parents. When you add in the piece, oh, hey, we're considering a bond measure, you know, a lot of the, the non-parents are, oh, that means my taxes may go up. So it peaks their interest. It's not that they're not going to be interested at all. They certainly will be. But we'll make sure that typically it's, it's on average 30% parents, 70% non-parents is, is on average kind of the, the breakdown of parents versus non-parents that we expect. Look at it by geographic area, by age, gender, things like this. And so you'll have a pretty clear measurement of the different support levels for each level of the bond, for each option, and then also for that MLO for teacher salaries. So.
You've done this a few times, huh?
Couple, couple times, yeah.
You know, say, you know, we're going to take this, you know, this summary and combine it with all the input we've received. And that's going to be, you know, some of the information that comes to the board. So not only will we have this, but then we'll have comments from all the different community meetings and impositions and, you know, the different notes we've taken to understand the full picture of, you know, on the survey that Ryan's talking about, but then also just internal too, you know, when we start looking at options in different buckets, what's attractive, not attractive, or different concerns that we've, we've heard.
As we've committed, we've been very deliberate in terms of seeking, doing more listening than talking, at least at the outset. And so we are really trying to gather as much input and, and, you know, from stakeholders, from the community, from parents, from students. Again, recognizing that nearly three-quarters of our voters are, they don't have kids in our schools. And so we want to make sure that we're, we're listening to them. And again, a lot of it is just informing, providing information, which is a part, you know, they can, we can do that through the survey, we can also do that through our community sessions as well. I will also note that Mike Housman right now is developing our next mailer to go out. And it will be just a gentle reminder of all the great things that we're doing here in the school district as well, maybe some things that you, we ought to be paying attention to as well in the district. So it's just, Mike, do you want to maybe high-level comment on that?
Yeah. If you want to come up, we're doing it from here.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll be sending it to the printer probably the first part of April. It'll be very needs-based. We'll be, we'll be featuring a letter from Chris and Tom, our chair and vice chair of the Master Plan Committee, as well as a letter from, from Mark and Barb as well. But we'll be focusing specifically a lot on the things that we covered with our, those meetings that we did with staff members, talking about maintenance needs, security needs, educational enhancements needs, enhancement needs, demographics around the challenges that are in Berthitt. It will be at a pretty high level because we have a very limited space upon which to work, but we will have QR codes and, and other ways for people then who want to learn more and see more detail to be able to route back to the Master Plan Committee section on the website to get a little bit more data. And that section will obviously continue to build out as we go through the process in terms of just educating folks around that.
All right, Laurie. So next, just want to, you know, as we end the presentation and talk about, any questions you have, I just wanted to round the presentation with the needs. You know, we talked, we talked about what we're doing, but in this slide here, this is the, what we're talking about. So we're talking about needs, we're just talking right now about high-level needs that we have throughout the district, whether it be in the demographics, education enhancement, safety, security, and maintenance. So, you know, along with the, the process of communication going out, we're also going through the process now of fine-tuning everything, you know, fleshing out the details of it to then react to what we know and we hear from the survey and then the board. So then we can, in August-ish timeframe, understand real quick, you know, if this is what we're going to do, then we, we have those buckets and those needs already there defined then for ballot language. So just an awareness for, you know, the board and then community that here's just the general needs we're talking about from now till about 2030. So from there, we will pause and take questions.
I'm going to ask for you to go back to that timeline page.
Yes, Barb, I like that.
So I'm kind of just trying to imagine summer, well, we'll take July off, but we're still meeting June and August. We start back in again. What happens then? I mean, that's when we're writing, when, when is it that we have to write what the language will be?
Yeah, so the plan would be June is to really come to the board with the final plan. So the board understands, yeah, we're not going to meet in July, but then formally approve, you know, the resolution in August. And then after that, Magellan, he was going to help us with legal, with the language, and then write in the ballot language. So once we get the resolution and the recommendations now is in that August, to give staff and community the time during the summer. But then August, the resolution to proceed. And then we'll get into the logistics of those next steps of, you know, the financing and Gordon's piece of what that looks like, and then also ballot language.
And just one quick point on the language. So in the survey, I mean, we're going to try to mirror as much as we can what that language is going to look like. Because the last thing you want to do is, is just have some really general paraphrase in the survey and then have the ballot language be totally different, or at least people perceive it as different, whether it is or not. So we're going to try and mirror that as much as we can at this early stage.
All right. Thank you. I just needed to hear that all again. All right, questions? I'm not sure where we start. That's not quite too central tonight, is it?
It's all good.
Yeah?
I have, I do have a thought. Every time I see this, luckily I see it a lot. As we get ready to do more of the public community sessions, I think that overall needs, where we have four buckets, we need to, I think, have one also. We need to have a way that we capture all that math.
As far as...
I just need, like, I could do the math.
Oh, you're saying to summarize it all as one?
One number as well. That'd be helpful, I think. Because none of our asks are going to include all of that. And so if we could say, we're not asking for everything, we're asking for, you know, half and less would be, I think, helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And do you have any other questions? All right. Hanging in there.
Yeah, of course, don't worry. All interesting stuff, so.
All right.
Appreciate it. Yeah, appreciate it. So.
6.2 is our Head Start training and update. You've been waiting. Melissa and Amy.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. And I'm here to introduce to you Amy Gerhart, our Assistant Administrator for Early Childhood Education. She is going to fill us in in Lamb's absence tonight on just an update on Head Start and some training that is mandatory for new board members, so. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. Lamb wanted me to express his apologies for not being able to be here tonight, and thank you for allowing me to be here in his place. So I've been waiting all day. So the connection to Strive 2025, our program really connects to all of that. We seek to prepare students for academic success through staff that provide that high-quality learning experience in an inclusive environment. We really strive to be responsible stewards of our resources to support our students and community. So it's kind of our whole, our whole mission. So we're so happy to align so nicely. Our vision and mission, children's and children and families empowered for a lifetime of learning. And then our staff, community members, parents have worked together to, to create that mission. And we just, we revisit it every year and talk about it with new employees to make sure that they really feel they can work towards that goal. So I'm not going to read that to you, you can read. So I'm not going to read that to you, you can read. Thompson Integrated Early Childhood Program is funded in several ways. Head Start is one of those ways, special education, tuition, and then, of course, universal preschool. So tonight, we're going to talk about Head Start. Head Start was started in 1964, and they really, one of the key tenets was that the program be culturally responsible, or responsive to the communities that they serve, and really that the communities have that investment in the success of their children and families. And we also really work to get a lot of volunteers and other donations as non-federal share. That's a big piece of what they do. We are regulated by the Head Start Performance Standards, and those are linked here, so if you really want to read through some really exciting information, it's all there for you. And those were originally published in 1975. In 1998, the Head Start program was reauthorized to expand to include full-day services and full-year services. We currently only have six classrooms that are full-day, and we, that meets the requirement of Head Start, and so we offer some part-day classes as well. It was most recently reauthorized in 2007, and then the ways that children can qualify for Head Start are based on age, income, homelessness, and foster. So the Head Start philosophy is really, Head Start really looks at the whole child as part of a family unit, and supporting that family and knowing that when we support the family, we also support children. And so that's kind of the whole philosophy. So really that we want to support each child as a unique individual. We realize that children benefit from comprehensive services, so a lot of what we do is help connect families to resources like healthcare and dental care and utilities and those kinds of things that they may not have access to or know how to gain access to. Very family-involved also. And then obviously, really want to foster those skills to help them become socially and academically successful, and then obviously, the health and physical piece too as well. So as I said before, it's a really comprehensive program. It's not just teaching the child, but it's really looking at the whole child. And so that includes child development, obviously, health and safety, nutrition, special needs, mental health, and really a large focus on family and community partnerships. So I mentioned this before, but it's the way that a child can qualify for our program, all of these things as mentioned, but also to include SNAP and TANF. And one thing that has of late been really helpful is our partnership with our McKinnon Vento team with the district. We've been able to identify families that are homeless, and on the questionnaire, if a child, if they have a child that's under five, they mark that, and then we can quickly get them in and get them services. So that's been a really nice partnership, so very thankful for that. Again, the Head Start Performance Standards are linked here, but basically, we're going to go into, the district is the grantee, so there are responsibilities that we have because it's a federal grant. So the board and the district has legal and fiscal responsibility for administering and overseeing the program. And so we're going to go into kind of what that looks like for you and what responsibilities you have as the board. So the Office of Head Start mandates a shared governance between Policy Council, which is a group of parents and community members that is in our program, and then you, the governing board. We ask that you engage in practices that ensure active, informed governance of this, so you participate in planning, development, and evaluation of the program. And how that looks is you, basically, it's a federal grant, right? So we have to make sure that we're compliant, we're doing everything that we're supposed to do with the state and local laws. So part of that is making sure that we meet the eligibility requirements for recruitment and selection and enrollment of children, that we review any applications or funding. So when we have to write the new grant, we'll bring that to you. If there's a COLA, COLA increase, then we bring that to you. We ask that you review and approve a self-assessment that we do yearly, and then a community assessment as well. And then finally, that you approve financial management, accounting, and reporting policies. So what to expect? So every month, you're going to get reports from our Family Pie or our Policy Council. You're going to get an annual self-assessment and community assessment. You will get to see the grant proposal, and you'll approve that, or not approve it, but hopefully you approve it. And then any additional Head Start grant funding possibilities, so COLA, or perhaps, so they often offer opportunities for, to improve or even expand the program, and so that's an additional grant that we have to write. So you would see that as well. So as part of a recipient of a federal grant, you get to be reviewed quite often, in fact. This year, we were fortunate enough to receive our, they call it an FA2 review. It's a very comprehensive review, and it covers, they send people out for a week, they spend time really digging into every part of our program, making sure that we're completing and compliant with everything in those performance standards. So you can see there, it's very, very comprehensive. Those are all the areas that they look at. They interview parents, they do observations, they interview staff members and community members, so it's board members. So it's a very thorough review. So you either are found in compliant or not compliant. So the areas that we're found to be in compliance were program design, management improvement, education and child development services, health services, family and community engagement services, eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance. So yay. This is a new process that they have started this year, and they are highlighting what they call strong practices. So if they see something that the grant recipient is doing that's really great, they highlight that as a strong practice. So we were found to have three strong practices, and one of those that we're very proud of is the fact that we actively seek and act on staff feedback regarding diversity, equity, inclusion. Another one that's very important is that we're helping families to access health services and really to mitigate those community health barriers. And then, again, with that partnership with McKinnon Vento, really helping them and helping families get a pathway out of poverty, so, and actually find homes and all of those things that when you're homeless, you just, it's so hard to function. So, yeah, so we're very proud of that. We did have two areas of non-compliance, and Gordon is here to talk about that.
Is this the strong practices? I would gladly stay at the kids' table in this case. Amy certainly could comment on these items as well. So it's not from a lack of confidence in her being able to speak to it, it's more of you should get to take credit for the programmatic side of things, all of the great things that are happening in the program, and let me give some more insight on the non-compliance items. So as Amy mentioned, there's three levels of scoring, I guess you would say, compliant, non-compliant, and deficient. And you do not want to be in the deficient category. We would prefer to not be in the non-compliant category, but I have, in the spirit of full transparency for the board, the community, anybody else that wants to go out and look at the results of the FA2 review that would be available publicly to provide a bit of context. So there were two areas that were identified as non-compliant from a fiscal or a financial management structure and system standpoint. The first was a delayed drawdown of available funds and the reporting. So we get awarded an amount each year from the Head Start program, and then we incur expenses, and then we file a request for funds or request for reimbursement. During the time, we had some turnover in staff, in our grant accounting staff. It was at the tail end of COVID. I should say that this was a three-year period that they review as well, so they're looking at a three-year window. We, let me offer this, before the review, before this review, we were notified that we were going to have that. We volunteered. They came, the Head Start came to us and said, we have this program, if you want to volunteer, you can have a review, a pre-review, if you will. And we gladly accepted that opportunity to have somebody come out to help us look at the program from programmatic side and the financial side both. That was very beneficial. It was, it was great conversations, it was very open and collaborative in that process. So we had that done well before we were even notified that we were going to have be selected for an FA2 review. So when this time period came, we had identified the deficient, not deficiencies, sorry, no deficiencies, non-compliance items. And we had already corrected those items after the preliminary review, even some of them before we had the preliminary review. But the audit or the review for the FA2 was over a three-year period, and over that three-year period, even though we had already corrected these items, during the period of review, they were non-compliant. So that's what you're seeing here. And the first was a delayed drawdown of the funds. We are required to do that quarterly, we are actually doing that monthly now. So it helps from a cash flow purpose, if we're expending the dollars, that we're recapturing those or getting reimbursed for those as soon as possible. So we are drawing down those funds on a monthly basis rather than quarterly, which is required. And then a lack of documented policies and procedures specific to Head Start. This is not, because it's a federal program, it's not unlike the ESAR reviews that we are part of right now as well, from the CDE level, who is the party managing those as they flow through the state organization. So we have policies and procedures in place. They would like to see or wanted to see something that was Head Start specific, so we have created a specifically branded Thompson School District Head Start Program Financial Policies and Procedures Manual that we have that's completed on file that we can provide to any of the auditors now. So that's the overview of what those non-compliance items were, but they have all been corrected at this point.
Thank you. So I should note, yesterday and the day before, we had a regional Head Start visit, and they come out every year and they tour classrooms and interview people as well, and they consistently recommend other programs in our region to come and see our program. Oh, you should go see, you should go see Thompson, they do such, you know, they do great things, and if you are struggling with this, you should talk to Lamb, and those kinds of things. So you should know that there's lots and lots of positives as well.
And we participated in that conversation as well. They met with various groups, financial was one of those, and again, very similar comments. They hold the Thompson program in very high esteem, and it was a great, open, and honest discussion about a variety of different things, things that we had questions on from a financial aspect, and they were very helpful in providing some insight there as well.
So outside of Head Start, Colorado Universal Preschool Portal, it's now not UPK, they've changed it, and depending on what site and what document you look at, it might be Universal Preschool Colorado or Colorado Universal Preschool. So when they decide what that actually is, that would be great. Anyways, the portal opened last Thursday for returning families, and on March 28th, it will open up to other families as well. And then just exciting news, as we're looking at a grant opportunity with Head Start to create some additional early childhood classrooms at Winona, in the very infancy stages, and Mr. Todd Bakony is helping with that.
So before we get to any questions, we really will, thank you, Gordon, always. I will say that we have an exceptional early childhood program. I meet monthly with Lamb, Gordon, Melissa, and Sarah, really just to get updates on early childhood. So it's something that we pay a lot of attention to. We do well because of the staff. In fact, when I, we did the road show to talk about potential bond, I actually visited with the early childhood team, it seemed like a hundred people.
There are about 120 of us, yes.
It was a big group. I worked in my public speaking, but I will say that it's just, it's a quality program. We are excited about a potential grant opportunity at Winona, and as we know, that could create a win-win for the school in terms of helping to support enrollment, but also providing just necessary expansion of early childhood services, which our community is really hungry for. So it seemed like a no-brainer for us, of course, but more to come as we continue our research.
Any questions over here? Let's start with Don, how about you? Because I've lost track of where we are.
All right, first off, I want to say that I personally think it's really dumb, not that it matters, but I think it's dumb that we have similar documents, but they're like just slightly different branding, that is actually way riskier than what we had in place. I know we have to do what we have to do, but from an auditing perspective, that's actually garbage, so I'm just saying that, because at least one of those things was lame. I am especially proud of what was highlighted as our strengths, right? Just, it's amazing. I know we have a fantastic program, but it's always nice when you get to see, you know, what other people kind of hone in on when they have a chance to come in and see it. And I know that our financial stuff is also part of that, because we couldn't make this work if we weren't figuring out how to do that. And so I'm really grateful for what all of you are doing.
Nice job, Amy. Amy, our school board member, Amy is the one who's taken over that slot. So I stepped away from that committee this year, and Amy is doing it with Amy and Lamb, and I'm, yeah, so it's in good hands. And I miss it. Sue?
No question, just congratulations on continuing this outstanding program that benefits our kids.
Denise?
So how many students do we have, family or families currently, and what kind of room do we have, if any? And then what's that gap in the community?
That's a lot of questions.
Yes, it is.
I think we are in the upper 600s right now in total. 139 of those are Head Start students, so the rest are the other funding sources, UPK, special ed, tuition. I think we anticipate we could have up to 1,000, maybe. The problem then becomes finding qualified staff. Our teachers are all master's level early childhood special ed teachers or have a bachelor's degree in early childhood special ed. So we're, it's just hard to find qualified staff. So I think we could definitely grow, and that's just where the challenge lies. So we have been able to start those interviews and start some of that.
Thank you.
Just to extend on that, and I would say, yes, I would say staff is probably the largest challenge, qualified staff. Other districts, not so much Thompson School District, space would be the other variable. I know many districts up and down the front range, actually statewide, are really struggling with space and capacity, especially moving into UPK, Universal UPK. We fared pretty well, and we still have additional space capacity. Again, to Amy's point, I mean, we, there's plenty of demand, you know, there's plenty of demand within the community, and it's one of those, if we build it, people will come. And so we are, you know, we are working now really on staffing and trying to get out in front. We are an employer of choice, especially for those in early childhood, so we, I think we do an excellent job of recruiting and retaining in early childhood, because it's just a great program. We have amazing facilities. So those are some of the variables, but I would say staff would be the biggest barrier.
Melissa, do we have any interns, or is the Teacher Cadet Program going to include early childhood?
I think so. I actually think there might be one that's been in there now or before, but as part of just the whole experience, paraprofessionals or classified staff are also, we utilize them more in early childhood than we do. more in early childhood than we do in our other classrooms. And so, the experiences are readily available for them.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we think about that part of it as well.
That's a great idea.
Where do I leave off? Everybody got an opportunity? Alexandra?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you hanging in there with us.
No worries.
All right. The next one is our discussion on six point three, it's Parent Teacher Associations, PTA's, and quality and learning, I believe, is how we're going to, and we have Gordon.
I'm all smiles, because Gordon and I are presenting together. This is the first time.
Before Bill and Gordon get started, I'll remind the board, this is really good about the other community, our Board of Education has identified topics of interest and study that they would like staff to provide presentation information on, and then opportunities to discuss. So, this is one of the most topics.
Madam President, School Board Dr. Schaefer, Phil Saver, Chief Human Resources Officer, accompanied by the Jordan Jones, Chief Financial Officer. Did you ever see that movie Step Brothers? That we, we were going to dress like that. We said, "No, we'll just do this." Wear his white shirt, I have a blue shirt. All right. So, strike twenty-five, focus area number two, inclusive and supportive culture. Ensure learning environments supportive positive culture and climate. Ensure all stakeholders are engaged in effective two-way communication through a wide variety of strategies. This presentation will focus on strike twenty-five by PTA and PTO in schools, and we'll also take a look at board policies too. So, our goal tonight is to provide as much of a resource that we can for your discussion, and then from the discussion, we'll be taking as many notes as we can and kind of answer any questions that we can. And then, pull in Dr. Snyder as well, to kind of answer any questions. That was impromptu, we just told her right now.
It just happened.
Tell by the look.
It just happened.
She's about to leave early, but whatever.
I was texting Sarah earlier, and I said, "Sir, are you going to be here?" And she took off. All right. So, presentation topics, family and community engagement definition. We really pulled a lot of the board policies, just to know, and it's good for the community as well, to kind of understand. And a PTO and PTA, you know, we'll talk about the difference there. Relationships with parent organizations, which is extremely important for a successful school. And then, the other thing about national standards for family-school partnerships, so there are national standards out there as well. And then, PTA, PTO finances, Gordon will do an amazing job there. And then, we'll weave in the idea of what, what schools have what and how many times they meet. And it's a little different at all levels, because you have elementary PK eight schools, you have middle schools and high schools. So, board policy, KBE, family and community engagement definition. Family, students, district personnel, school programs, and community partners actively partnering to develop, implement, and evaluate effective, culturally responsive, and equitable practices to improve education outcomes for children and youth. So, that's a great, a great part of the definition for KBE. And then, we pulled other information from their Thompson School District's family and community engagement framework. So, their frameworks, the following district priorities, which is increasing student achievement, of course, like that's a number one priority for anything that goes on in a district, is all about increasing student achievement. Creating an inclusive and supportive culture, extremely important. Developing human talent and ensuring strong stewardship of resources.
Does this seem suspiciously similar to strike twenty-five?
It does. Strange, huh?
Weird.
And then, KBE, relations with parent organizations, because parents and teachers are partners in effective education. The board seeks to encourage and strengthen relations with parents, extremely important. By working together, the home and the district can support each other in reaching their common educational goals. And at times, the thing that I love the most about this, at times you think, okay, I'm sending my children to school, and then they come home and there's a disconnect from, from home, right? But, the next is part of them going home, students going home. Like, parents are a big part of their education, you know, as far as having conversations about, you know, what their future likes, or helping them with things that come at home. And I could talk forever about that. I'll put the principal role on and talk about that, but. And then, consulting with encouraging parents to share in school planning and accountability committees, that's a big part, being involved in, in their school. And there are so many different opportunities, you know, as we get into, you know, what schools have. Encouraging the maintenance of formal parent organizations at each school building, and then helping parents' associations to secure and use free of rental charge school buildings for their meetings in accordance with board policy governing such use. So, the other thing too, of PTA's, PTO's, there's also SACS too, like there's boosters at the high schools. There's so many different organizations for parents to get involved. And then, helping parents understand the educational process and specific school or classroom goals. Providing opportunities for parents to be informed, which is huge, about their child's development and criteria for its measurement. Providing appropriate avenues for parents to find support in their role as parents. And providing voluntary opportunities that promote student success. And, and a big part of it is teaching parents what it is to be a parent to help support, which is amazing. You know, the more years being a principal, you kind of start seeing that, where you start coaching more parents of how to get involved. National standards for family-school partnerships. So, there are six standards there. Welcoming all families, communicate effectively, support student success, speak up for every child, share power, and collaborate with the community. So, there's actually a handout there, like I'm not going to go through the handout, but it gives you an idea that there are standards. So, you know, if you go in that direction, like there are standards that parents can follow, you know, as far as a group.
And from a finance perspective, the organizations within each of our schools have the ability to select one of three options. So, this is for any fundraising activities they have, any purchasing of supplies or materials, whatever they would so choose to spend those dollars on. First option is they can elect to have district student activity fund status. So, for us, that's Fund 23, where the majority of our fundraising, in fact, all of our fundraising accounts, whether it be for sports or PTOs, PTA's, all of those are through Fund 23. That's an option that is not chosen very often. I think we have three or four of our schools from the elementaries and middle schools that elect that option. That means that those, the revenues, when they're collected, come to the district, we deposit them in our, our account for Fund 23. When there's purchases that are necessary, they follow the district purchasing policies and guidelines, and we make those purchases and deduct the dollars from that account. So, there's.
I'm sorry. Where does the money come from for Fund 23? Is it just from certain schools that put their money in, so it's a choice? It's not every school puts it in?
That is absolutely correct. So, it is the PTO or PTA's in this, for, germane to this conversation, is those organizations making that election if they want to ask for district student, student activity fund status. The other choice that district, a second choice that district, I'm sorry, not districts, but PTOs, PTA's have, is they can seek recognition on their own, not through the district, but on their own, for qualifying for federal government section 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. So, if that's the case, they, the organization itself effectively essentially manage their own funds. So, whatever fundraisers they may have, they collect those funds, they have a checking account or an account that they have created as part of their 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. And then, making purchases, they would, they would process all of those purchases. So, it doesn't flow through the district accounting office, it's handled by the individual 501(c)(3), which is not dissimilar to what some of our booster clubs for sports may do, or other, other fundraising activities that qualify, that elect to qualify for a 501(c)(3). They have to file an annual tax return, there's various reporting requirements that they have to do if they have elected that status. And then, the third option that they have is for PTOs or PTA's to reach out to Colorado or Ash, Bill mentioned one of the other, the National Parent Teacher Associations. Very similar to the second option, again, qualifying for 501(c)(3) status through that organization, not on a standalone basis, but through the state or the federal organization. They become a subgroup of that, that particular organization, and their finances would be handled that way as well.
So, what's the advantage over the other? I mean, what would be the advantage of the top one? The middle one? The middle one, to me, is I have a hard time understanding how that could be a nonprofit when they're taking that money and going out and spending it on, yeah, but that's my, my issue.
Yeah. The, I think some of the pluses or minuses or advantages, disadvantages of each. If they do it through the, the district Fund 23, that's part of our, one of our funds that's audited annually. They would have that potentially, and, and the auditors don't come in and say, "Let us see," either PTO or PTA. They may sample and say, "Yeah, let me see this transaction or that transaction."
Can Fund 23, like if I'm in a, in a school that contributed money for Fund 23, can I only take out what my school put in?
Absolutely. Those funds are tracked very completely separately for each one of these. So, within, within an elementary school, they could have a PTO, PTA organization, they could have their, their fund run organization, fundraiser, that, that could, that would be, those funds are kept completely separate. It might be one in the same, the PTO, PTA might sponsor that event, so those funds would be the same. But, if they're, if they're different fundraisers or different groups, those are managed completely separate. We have separate accounts, not checking accounts, all the dollars are in the checking account, but they only have access to the dollars that are in their, in their particular line item, yes.
All right. I'm sorry, but I just, this is confusing to me. Well, go ahead.
That's all I have.
Okay. Sorry.
So, so just to weave in, so at the elementary school, so every school except Winona has a PTO or PTA. Some schools call it, like High Plains has a PTCEO, which is Parent Teacher Community Organization. So, it's the association, like PTA is an association where you have the national standards, and then PTO is more of the organizational part. So, they meet monthly, like BF Kitchen has an engagement support team, and, and they meet monthly. At the middle school, Bill Reed doesn't have one, but Irwin, Turner, and Walt Clark have a PTO. And Walt Clark has a PTSO, Parent Teacher Student Organization. And then, at the high school, there's only two high schools that have them, Loveland and Mountain View have a PTO, and they, you know, Loveland meets monthly, and then Mountain View's meets four times a year. And then, Bertha Ferguson in Thompson Valley doesn't have an organization. So, so they have SAC committees, and they have booster committees, different ways for parents to get involved.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that answered the, the question.
No. Okay.
That was asked of us, that, that we wanted to make sure that we weave that into the presentation.
So, here's where we need to go deeper in the conversation, and whether it happens just with us or where. There are schools like Garfield and Truska who have, they're locked into a land situation where there's not a lot of young families or families with kids. So, they're, they have a limited deal for what their PTOs, PTA's, whatever it is, can make when they do a fundraiser. Then, you're out where I am in High Plains, and they can make, they can do a fun run and come away with $45,000. And somebody else can come away with, they're, they're excited that they made $2,400. So, I guess that's kind of where our conversation, and that was where Amy, who brought this forward, was. How do we do this? How do we make it a little bit more?
Equitable.
Equitable for those schools that haves, the haves and the have-nots? And how do, is there anything we can do as a district or whatever that can help those schools? I mean, I look at how much money Bertha Bash makes in whatever, and who knows what we would make if ever done it. But, I'm mostly concerned about the elementaries who rely on their parent committee, whatever it is, because of their, what they can buy. Like, they can add things to their Makerspace, or they can add things to their library, or to their, whatever else they can do, because they get so much money from their fundraisers. And then, there's the schools that, they cannot earn enough money to buy a computer for their school, if that's what they're wanting. And, that's where we're concerned and wondered about, and that's where this topic came forward. It was inequity, the inequity of the whole procedure within our district. I don't know if there's a way to resolve it, I just know that it's something that several of us have talked about.
And I don't know if they're doing this in elementary school anymore, because we've been out for a while, but the little folder with all the, you know, prizes you can win for.
Oh, my gosh.
And it just sets up so many kids for disappointment. It's not everybody's going to sell two or one, and, you know, somebody else, "I got the eye on the watch," or whatever it is, because, you know, they'd have access through parents' workplaces or whatever. So, my skin crawled every time they came home. And I had four kids in this school one time. I was just like, I can't.
You can't do $300 for each kid.
Right.
Because that's what it's coming down to, is if you want the million prize, you have to sell $300 worth of whatever. And so, those, only those kids who can sell that much money or.
Stuff that nobody wants.
Get the prize. And the others get a sticker, because they participated. Even though they maybe did $15, $20, $30, they get a sticker, and the others get a limo ride, or they get whatever it might be that some family of PTA people have, have designed what the price could be. And it's just unfair, and it's taking, I mean, think about, and I've heard this especially from Winona families, VISA's being a place, Trust, I've heard it from Truska families, I've heard it from Garfield families, I've heard it from Sarah Melner. You know, it's just, it just, you look around the neighborhood and you can see why it's happening. And that's our concern. So, and I, I realize that's not what you guys had to, but you were attempting to address our understanding of what has to be done. We, we know what our options are, how we can promote it, I have no idea.
Yeah. So, I'll make a statement and a suggestion. So, my statement is I've invited staff to listen and gather notes, be available certainly to answer questions, but not, at this point, be more of a listener. But, no, absolutely answer questions. My suggestion is, yeah, I mean, just to have a board conversation and maybe continue with like one person at a time, go through just a sequence, just for some comments. And, we're, we're very interested to hear what the board, you know, have to say.
So, you've heard mine? Sorry. Stu?
Well, I know most colleges have professional fundraisers who are hired by the colleges. Do school districts have professional fundraisers?
We have the Thompson Education Foundation. I mean, I wouldn't say they're professional fundraisers, but they are a support or a branch for, but they're, but they're district-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm getting ready.
I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I would say that most schools, some school, many school districts have foundations, which can, they usually have focus areas and areas that are, you know, priorities for them, but they anchor off of district needs. But, they, they generate funds, right? Scholarship funds, travel funds, you know, they elevate and illuminate teacher recognitions and ceremonies. They have helped with the, the youth shelter and other pieces. So, they're targeted, I wouldn't say that they raise funds for the sake of raising it, but that they do help in other areas, technology, field trips, you know, it's a long list of how they support.
Okay. So, my, my follow-up comment is, and I have very high regard for TEF, but obviously, what they're doing is not addressing the problem that Barb just mentioned. So, I wonder if, as a district, we need to look at some type of a, I don't know if this is an individual, if this is involved, would involve grants, or what it would involve, if we're committed to providing these kinds of opportunities for the schools. If we're committed to providing these kinds of opportunities for the schools that are not able, for demographic reasons, to raise the comparable amount to help these schools. And this just occurred to me, and it might be a terrible idea, but it just occurred to me.
I'm on TEF. I just went to my first meeting, but I could certainly bring it forward. And it just, it just, as you said something, Donna and I kind of turned to each other and.
Here it is, here it is.
Is the way we might be able to approach that.
Yep.
Okay, Denise?
You've heard my concern.
Okay.
So I do actually have questions for you guys about, sort of about the presentation. So what, do PTOs and PTA's function in the same way or differently, or what? Is, is it just a different name, or are they actually?
Yeah, it's a different name with different standards. Like if you're associated with PTA, like there's standards that are involved in, you know, more, more support that way of, of just a connection.
So the P, so like the thing, the PTA standards and, and to join in, like the funding thing, to join in with that. Oh, well, but, oh, but see, but then that says PTO or PTA. To be affiliated with like the national group, you have to be a PTA and a PTO is more independent?
Yeah, it, it's more like local.
Okay.
Is, is the best way I can explain it.
I think they have to pay something to be part of the national PTA as an organization.
And then as far as the schools, there's the few schools that don't have one. Do we know why that is? Like have they tried and not had members, or have they not wanted to, or have they, like, why, why, why is that?
The, yeah, yeah, so the lack of support.
From parents?
From parents, yeah. There, there, there was like no interest in forming.
And which school was that again, which schools?
There are a few.
Winona?
And the rest of them have something.
Yeah, every other one has, has some type of PTO or PTA.
And are being formed, is it totally a hundred percent parent driven?
Yes.
I think the principals have something to do with getting it off the ground.
The other principals are more involved of, like an oversight, right, and being at the meeting, supporting parents.
But the acronym Parent Teacher Association, Parent Teacher Organization, there are teachers that participate or can be members as well.
So it just depends when the meetings are, and I keep talking, talking about being, being a former principal and having, you know, PTO. Like, like it depends the, the part of the day. Like we've tried different things where we have meetings at night and then meetings during the day. So we kind of offset the meetings for the year, just to get a wide variety of people involved.
Alright, so I have multiple thoughts around this that I just want to throw out there for us to think about with the, as we have like our problem solving. I really think we have to solve this problem. So even as I navigate some of the things that I keep bumping up against, I think it's worthy of our time to find a solution. I do think that we have, part of why some of our groups are successful is the talent that they have. So like to your point, Stu, about like, do we have professionals? We have semi-pros in some of our organizations, even if they're not getting paid, they are dang good. And so some of our groups are really successful just because they have people with some talent. And I think that that, that I think we should be looking to pull that in more collectively. Because I think it would be good for all of us to be tapping into that. Because what I see at like a school level is some of those really amazing people are, get burnt out because they carry, you know, like they often don't have a lot of support. And then the school that doesn't have somebody like that step up may be not having any success simply because somebody doesn't have the talent. With that being said, one of the biggest barriers to doing a holistic approach, like a district-wide approach, is that local matters. And so people do this stuff because these are kids in the neighborhood, right? And so like we are gonna have to have some solutions that address that. And we can, I just, it's, we gotta have that. Denise, you mentioned like some of your thoughts on this, and I specifically remember Kerry Martin changing how he did it for that reason. And Kerry Martin is one of the schools that has some real extremes in the, in the population. Big T was like that when I would grow up. I think it's still that way. And so you have like a real disparity amongst kids sitting next to each other in class, where that is why Kerry Martin completely got rid of that practice of competitive stuff. Other schools have gotten rid of it, and this is one reason why I'd really like for us to get rid of it. Because like the Girl Scouts got rid of it as a national organization, because it's not safe to do some of these things, right? Unless we have some really good rigorous practices, kids can be put at risk simply because we're asking them to fundraise the way that we are. But then I get really concerned, and where this came to light for me more than anything was, was where we have a whole school population, right? So we end up having our title schools be the ones that can't fundraise, because where are they, where are they gonna fundraise from? The pool doesn't exist. So you, you mentioned the geographic piece, which is true as well. But I'm even more concerned because the, the schools and students that need it the most are the ones who have the least access to it. And that is not okay with me, and it's certainly not okay with me for it to get on our radar unless not to dive into. And so I really worry about like our Title IX schools, because I know that the schools that have these programs are doing really important things with them. They are meeting needs. They're not just ice cream socials and, and fun things, which is also important. They are, they're meeting needs, educational needs. And so to have the equities there is really concerning to me. I'm grateful that you brought the data on who doesn't have them, because that then like puts this back to not, this isn't just something that we should maybe someday do. But I think there's an urgency to it, because now we have an awareness, and that means we're accountable for whether we solve this or not. I don't like the fact that a school that has a great need, one of our most economically disadvantaged and most diverse populations, is a school that doesn't even have representation. And of course, they don't have enough parent participation because they're working shifts and multiple jobs and everything else. And so like, I definitely want to make sure that whatever we come up with isn't gonna have a sacrifice. You know, I, I worry about that. I think that, you know, one of the reasons Berthas Bash is so wildly successful is because it's a neighborhood schools thing, right? They, like, everybody knows the kids. They're not just taking care of kids, they are taking care of a kid. That makes a difference. And I, I worry about what we trade off. But I do also think that Berthas is big enough now that if we don't solve it now, we're gonna have to solve it soon, just for population, for Berthas as well. You know, I mean, with the growth, it's growing a lot. So I think we're gonna, we're all in the same boat, or darn close, so.
This came up as a topic at our community engagement session the other night. Of course, yeah, it came right away, was the first topic frankly, was the haves and have-nots of financial support for schools. Yeah.
Financial support that's not provided by the district, right?
Exactly, it was, yeah, there's, yeah. It was obvious, and, and it was from a parent that was at Garfield. And they're asked to raise money for the LISA program, but then they're also asked to raise money for something else. And, you know, the LISA funds are for art, but then there were other pieces as well. So we talked about it for quite a while, trying to come up with how it could be addressed. So I just feel like it's something that, as we continue this year, I'd like us to revisit this in some fashion. And maybe it's one of those things that we communicate with some of the other districts and find out what are they doing? How do they work? Because I know Fort Collins has to be dealing with it. Same brand probably does too, because I worked down there at First Classic for quite a while. And I know that not all those schools have all the same things, right, huh? Yeah. So it's just, it's something that has to be considered for those schools that really want to add, and those moms that want to add something to their school, but they can't do it alone, so.
Sorry, I, I also think that we should consider volunteer pools in the same vein. Because I think that it's similar in that people want to help, but they don't always know where. And this, and there are schools that need a lot of help that don't have it, and others probably do. And so if we were to think about that a little bit more holistically, I think it might help this. Also, when people volunteer, they donate, just saying, like seventy percent of the time. So it's good practice.
Would, does the board want or would like additional information on anything that we could gather for you?
Can we get like the demographics by school in terms of like where are the real pockets of the have-nots?
That's good.
And if you have the, how much did they raise in the last year? That'd be really nice data to have along with.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, that would actually be helpful to do it well.
And then also, fees come to mind as part of this. Like what kids aren't participating in extracurriculars? Or taking classes because there's fees associated that parents can't afford, so.
We can ask, yeah, so.
They can't.
I mean, what's our philosophy on fees?
Yeah. Denise is gonna say what I've said for five years, huh? Say it Denise, say it. I want to hear you say it. I mean, I mean, we're offering people a basic education, but if you're not willing to pay for more, you, particularly at the high school level, my fees are insane. And, you know, I can afford these, but if anybody else wants to do pre-start and, you know, this expensive things that my kids are into, it's gonna hurt. They're gonna make trade-offs and it may not be taken to class.
What came out of the band uniform need over at Loveland High? Did they get, no, it was instruments that they needed, but that's on the cycle, am I right?
I mean, we got, they got some from the, how much did we get from the District Fifty? No, it, it, I mean, there's the seven-year uniform cycle that they got their chunk this year. And it covered, oh my gosh, I can't remember. I should know this. It definitely did not cover remotely all the entire cost. I think, I think the total cost of the, of the uniforms was something like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and from the district. I think they got thirty-five thousand.
And it was a, a carryover amount, dollars saved from one year and carried over to the next. That's probably, I, I don't want to speak on the record, but it's something in that neighborhood probably.
So it's a chunk of it. But yeah, I mean, the running, the, I mean, speaking of fundraising, I mean, running the band is a wildly expensive operation.
But I just remembered you had made a comment once, and I wonder how that's done.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, I mean, massive fundraising. But to, I mean, to a point also, this isn't just like a school district issue. There, I mean, there was a story on NPR the other day about GoFundMe things. And the people who make money on GoFundMe fundraisers are the people who have money to begin with. Like they did it, they did it looking at the Marshall Fire and people who created GoFundMe accounts after the Marshall Fire. And the people, they had the people, you know, whose incomes were higher made a ton more money than the people whose incomes are lower. Because of the same thing, because you have the pool of wealthy friends and whatever to donate to you. So that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to fix it, but it's, it's not, it's societal, societal problem.
That's exactly.
Can you speak just a little bit to fees and?
Yeah, it's been a, it's somewhat of a complicated area and getting unfortunately more complicated or, or more, more intricate. We loosely define our at-risk population as our free and reduced meal application. So that's the, historically, that's been the measurement. So families that filled out the free and reduced meal application qualified, qualified for reduced meals, free or reduced meals. Also, with that application, the, the board had authorized fee waivers for those families. So athletic participation fees, class fees, those things got waived. And that, that's, that's the way it was and still is to a certain extent. But it's been further complicated, no good deed shall go unpunished, with the Colorado Initiative for Healthy School Meals for All. So now there is, there's no, no compelling reason for a lot of families to fill out the free and reduced meal application. FARM as the acronym, acronym indicates. So the at-risk numbers have gone down, and now the district does not have that free and reduced meal application qualifier or as many people filling it out. Still, many people would qualify for that, many families would qualify. But they are not filling it out because they're, all children are essentially eating free at this point. The next step in that, if that's not complicated enough, is declaring community eligibility. The CEP or Community Eligibility Program, which is a federal program that says, if you have a certain economic or at-risk population for a school or an area, those families don't need to fill out the free and reduced meal application, but they qualify under the federal program. And the Colorado HSMA says you have to take advantage, full advantage, of whatever levels you can at the federal level first. And then the state will, will step in and cover the rest. So this, it's putting a bit of a, not a bit of a strain, it's putting a strain on the state budget. Because as families don't fill out the federal application, there's less federal reimbursement, which means the state portion is getting larger, putting more of a strain on the state budget. Now we talk about community eligibility program, which I just started speaking to. The, the threshold used to be that the, the at-risk level, whatever that nebulous measurement was, was forty percent. You had to have forty percent of your school population or the neighborhood population be at that forty percent at-risk number. They've just recently, within the last month, lowered that threshold from forty percent to twenty-five percent, which we as a district applied for to be, they offered mid-year conversion or mid-year eligibility for that. So as of March seventh, we are participating, we applied for and got accepted into that mid-year conversion program. So it lowers that community eligibility number down. Great and terrible at the same time, because now there's, by lowering that, and the big factor that lowered that was rolling in families that are eligible for Medicaid assistance. That was the big number that helps raise that at-risk number. But now we've lowered it to the, and it has been lowered to a twenty-five percent threshold, so the bar is lower. More, we could be in a position as a district to have the entire district covered by CEP. We have to see how this mid-year rollout and the twenty-five percent lowering of the bar, or lowering of the threshold interacts with all this. But it could be the district-wide, we are eligible for, for that program. So that means assistance at the free and reduced reimbursement rate from the federal government. So Thompson would be doing their share to help at the state government level, because we're getting as much reimbursement as we can from the federal, which lowers our reliance or the need for, for lack of a better term, backfill from the state level. However, that means no families would potentially have to fill out a free and reduced meal application. So now do we have a mechanism for fees, fee waivers for those families that would qualify? The, the, the mechanism that created that in the past was free and reduced meal applications, which now could potentially go away. So we are exploring the option, um, the state has requirements, the feds have a requirement. Can we have a one-page form which is a much, much simplified free and reduced meal type application that families could fill out, which would still then be recognized by the district as their qualification for fee waivers? Sorry for my five-minute description of it.
No, no, that was not five minutes, so. So, so just the last thing I just want to say is one person can make a difference. Like one person can make difference. Like being the former principal of Turner and Bertha Bash starting while I was the principal, like a family came, like one family came to me, talked to me about the idea because they moved out of state. And they, they ran with that idea and support, and there was huge support. But that was one family that came in and was motivated to help the schools. So it's been truly amazing. So I, I say like one person can make a difference.
Alright, it's eight o'clock. I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned.